Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us at our regularly scheduled city council meeting Tuesday, April 8th. I'll ask the city clerk to establish a quorum and call the meeting to order.
Councilmember Echols.
Here.
Councilmember Landrum.
Here.
Councilmember LaFaye.
Here.
Mayor Protam Edwards.
Here.
And Mayor Wixom.
Here. With that, Mr. Carmichael, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you. Ready to begin. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reports. Closed session.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. The council met in closed session prior to tonight's regular session. The items discussed was real property negotiations regarding lease site 134, 136, and 132W and 133W, which is Tognizini's. The other item was 1247 and Barcadero, Quill Saltwell Taffy. And the third one was the Morro Bay Fish Company, lease site 129W and 131W. As to all of the items, and the fourth, I'm sorry, the fourth property negotiation was the Morings A1 through 4. As to all the property negotiations, no action was taken that requires reporting into the Brown Act. Also discussed was the public employee performance evaluation of the city attorney and the city manager. As to both of those evaluations, no action was taken that requires reporting under the Brown Act.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Appreciate that. With that, we'll move into Mayor and Councilmember reports and announcements, and I will start to my left with Councilmember Echols.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. We've got a packed house. It's nice to see. I am still have an afterglow from our last meeting and the establishment of our city goals. And one of the things that I mentioned during that goal-setting process was the establishment of a culture of yes in the city of Morro Bay, and what that means. And it means everyone that's up here is here to serve you, and our staff is here to serve the residents of Morro Bay. And I honestly believe that we're doing that to the best of our ability, and that's our main motivator. That being said, I want to recognize two staff members. Our Director of Public Works, Mr. Qualick, has, I'm privy to be in some email chains and see how our staff responds to residents' needs and requests. And I want to thank Director Qualick for living up to that motto of a culture of yes, as well as Director Singwald, dealing with various applicants. It's not always easy. These folks are working hard in the city for you, and we're actually very privileged to have the level of caliber that we do in these staff members. So I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge both Director Singwald of our Community Development Department and Director Qualick from Public Works for working every day to establish that culture of yes in our city. Thank you.
Mayor Protam?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Welcome, everybody. It's great to see a full house. I love it. I thought that I would talk about an experience I had. I did a staycation with my husband for our anniversary this last weekend in Paso Robles. And I always find it interesting to learn from our community, our neighbors. And so I wanted to share a little bit about what I learned in that experience. And a couple of the things that I took away was that there was diversity of restaurants, a diversity of bars, all along a park, you know, a park. Plenty of parking. I do know that they got rid of their paid parking, and that has allowed for people to park around the square in the park area. So that was a big change that they made. It's about encouraging walking and walkability, as well as sitting in different gathering spaces. They have a beautiful, probably refurbished, child's park area where people were playing, a lot of people walking their pets, lots of patio dining area, and just kind of giving it a sense of community. And people were just walking and talking with each other, and it was really great. One of the other things that I took away was that they do have a kiosk. It's placed in an interesting spot. It is off of the park side, but it made me think about all the wonderful woodworkers, artists, and people that we have living here in this community. And I wonder if we were to all put our thinking caps on and our creativity, if we could come up with something like it. It was very basic. It had maps on either side and little areas for brochures. And I saw numerous people looking at it. So it's something to think about. I don't know how costly it would be, but maybe it's something that we can come together on. Another thing that was great is that there was a lot of collaboration between businesses. And I've talked about this a long time ago when I was Chair of the Chamber, and finding a way to educate each other about each other's businesses, so that if somebody is coming into your place of dining or what have you, you're able to tell that visitor, and in this case, I wasn't coming from very far, and I was asking questions about, you know, where do you like to go eat? What are some of the shops that you like to shop in? And almost every single person had an answer. And it was very clear that they had been cultivating that. So I think that it is something that we should, you know, pride ourselves on doing as residents and business owners, to make suggestions and to be, take that pride in our community, and moving people around to enjoy the assets that we have. And it reminded me a little bit of Chamber time when we had the roundtables. I don't know if many of you out there in the audience remember those, and that's when, you know, you kind of get on your soapbox, your 30-second elevator speech, whatever it is, and just learn about each other's businesses. So that's something I went away with this last weekend and really enjoyed my time. Wanted to just lastly remind everybody, this coming Friday, which is April 11th, at 5:30 is the Sip and Stroll Downtown. Perfect timing for what I just said, to come and enjoy all the businesses, the restaurants, and places that we have here in our own town. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember LaFaye?
Yes, welcome, everyone. My announcement here is we're holding our annual Marine Squat Meet on June 29th at the Triangle Lot on the Embarcadero. That is, you can go to the Friends of the Morro Bay Harbor Department dot org. If you're a vendor and you have any marine-oriented supplies, surfboards, scuba gear, fishing rods, you can sell those, canoes, boats. It's a free event, and it's held every year. So please look for that at the Friends of the Morro Bay Harbor Department. Also, I attended the Public Works and the Harbor Advisory Board combined meeting this last Thursday, and we were informed by Brady and Corporation on the revetments and seawalls that need to be repaired in our harbor to the tune of between $26 and $54 million. It's a big figure. They were all categorized from critical down to they need be done within 10 years. So we have our work cut out for us, but at least we know what we need to do, and this is the first step. So that's all I have.
I don't have that much to report out, but I am really enjoying this crowd here tonight. Look at that front row especially. Never looked so gorgeous. So thank you all for coming.
Thank you, everyone. I have to echo that. I agree with you. It's nice to see all the kids out from Kids Club. Thank you for being here, and thank you for these beautiful plants up here, too, that are adorning our days this evening. I, too, attended the joint Public Works Advisory Hab meeting as a liaison, along with, four of us were there, separated. And I appreciate, it was a very great, in-depth, yes, but I'm not talking into it, in-depth look at what it's going to take for the seawalls and revetments. And I want to do a shout-out to other staff members as well, which is our Harbor Director, Chris Munson, and also our City Engineer, Cindy Cecil, who did a lot of this work with the survey company, and there's a lot more to be done. So I really appreciate the deep dive they did together. I attended the Chamber of Commerce luncheon. Thank you again to the Chamber for inviting me to speak on behalf of Morro Bay, and I was able to just provide a look back at the year in review with our city team and community engagement and events and activities that have been a part of our community, and how each one of our departments has factored into that, whether it was Public Works trimming trees and working with Dog Park members, or Kids Club down with the Halloween night, the Harbor Department down there, part of the 60th anniversary, just a lot of great events and activities that happen year-round, along with the task and the work that they do. So it was nice to be able to showcase that. I appreciate that. I attended a evening last week up at the California Midstate Fairgrounds. I was invited up for their awards recognitions, and some excitement up there. Being part of the agriculture community, I have long ties with it. They've been nominated for, the fair's been nominated along with the Calvary Stampede and a bunch of others by the Country Music Awards. So it'll be great to see. I don't know how they'll do, but it's pretty exciting for them to be recognized. So I have one other thing. I had a Slocog, San Luis County Office of Governments, meeting, and I want to share with you all that our June, our June 4th meeting, there will be a presentation from the Office of Emergency Services, and they will provide a countywide overview of the county's preparedness structure. So I would encourage any of you who are interested in seeing what that looks like as we continue to work with the county and state local on flood mitigation challenges out in the Chorral Valley. This is televised on Channel 21, 9:00 AM, or you can attend at the county government offices. And that's it for now. I will move on to the City Manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a collective of updates from each department. We, the city received official announcement that Avistra will withdraw their BASS application from the city. So the Community Development Director is going to process that request shortly, and our public can expect to see the, some results of the process. And in Harbor end, we have some good news. Harbor Director was able to get some clarification from different state departments, for example, and for the dredging. Maybe there is a possibility that the material can be placed somewhere that make the back bay dredging more affordable. Again, it's a maybe. I'm just very excited to share this with the council and then the public on that. And also, Harbor had issued RFP to dispose of some inoperable boats in the water, and that has been completed, that job has been completed. So our harbor looks better now. Also continued research on T-Pier, T-Pier funding, and through federal year mark process, and Harbor Director have find some collaboration, approve of collaboration with Coastal Guard, and we have approved now. So we're going to use our letter of support from the Coastal Guard to help us with the T-Pier funding. Again, it's a very long process, but I thought those are really good news that I can't wait to share with the council and the public. And kudos to the Harbor Director. Job well done. And lastly, I really, I wanted to apologize for the inconvenience that has created last week in Embarcadero due to the paving, some of the paving preparation work. Public Works staff and I, we discussed that, and also Public Works has met with the Chamber of Commerce. We are going to improve our communication before, before the work. So coming up, I expect that the communication will be much clearer, and so we will try to avoid any inconvenience ahead of time. That's, I have.
Thank you very much for the update. And yes, just for the community outreach, we will be doing the seal on the streets coming up real soon over the next few weeks, so be looking for notices and signs. This has to be done now, and I know it's always challenging, but we do have a city ordinance that does not allow paving from Memorial Weekend through Labor Day Weekend in our commercial and business areas. So trying to find that window when it's not raining has been a little bit of a challenge. So they're doing the best they can to not inconvenience residential and businesses, but it always has an impact. Subcommittee, or excuse me, reports from subcommittees. Anything from you, Mr. Singwald?
No reports.
And Mr. Qualick?
No Wharf Subcommittee report today.
Thank you very much. With that, I'm going to move on to a proclamation this evening. We have the honor of declaring April as Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month. Glad to have you all here for that this evening. And I will start with, whereas the City of Morro Bay City Council recognizes that every moment in a child's life is an opportunity for that child to learn, that the quality of these experiences may determine the child's resilience, whether the child succeeds in school and in life, and that all children need caring and loving adults in their lives. Whereas April, the Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month, marks a time to recognize that our community's children are precious assets who all deserve to experience the wonder and magic of childhood, that the quality of their early years is our collective responsibility, and that we commit ourselves to ensuring that each and every child has access to a high-quality early environment at home, at childcare, at school, and in the community that will promote their optimal growth and development. Whereas in solidarity with the San Luis Obispo County Early Care and Education Planning Council's Advocacy Committee, we as the community of partners and leaders envision a San Luis Obispo County where all families can find and afford quality care for their children, and where childcare professionals are valued for their critical role in building a solid foundation for children and families to thrive in the world. Whereas Saturday, April 5th, will commemorate Day of the Child at the Annual Children's Day at the Plaza Celebration, I believe that was last weekend, from 10:00 to 3:00, San Luis Mission Plaza. This year's celebration, where children and families will have the opportunity to discover creativity, individuality, and diversity while exploring local resources and building connections with a focus on acceptance in order to foster a strong sense of community. Whereas Friday, April 25th, 2025, our county will participate in the statewide raising of the children's memorial flag to honor and raise awareness about the many children in our midst who suffer daily from abuse and neglect, and pledge our support for strategies that strengthen families and protect our young ones as part of the National Recognition of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the City of Morro Bay City Council is proclaiming April 25th, April 2025, as Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month. And with that, I would like to invite Angelica up. Thank you.
I'll just be very quick, before she and the beautiful kids start theirs. I'm here for this loco early care and education planning council, and it's an incredible honor to accept this proclamation, not just for myself, but for every educator, parent, mentor, and advocate who works to uplift and support our children as we invest in a better tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I will be quick as well. Well, I want to thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Angelica Jepson, Recreation Supervisor, and with me I have Kirk Carmichael, who is our Recreation Manager, and Kate Breed, who is our Cal Poly intern this semester, or this quarter. We just want to appreciate your recognition of Month of the Child at that time that's especially meaningful to us at Recreation. As you know, we are truly part of the village that helps raise these children in our community for, from the infants in Mommy &amp; Me class to the youth who participate in our sports leagues before and after-school programs, summer camps, and swim lessons, as well as our junior guards program, all the way to the high school and college students who come back and work as camp counselors, sports officials, and instructors. We are proud to support the full circle of youth development here at Morro Bay. Today, we are excited to introduce the selected winners of our Month of the Child art project. We hope you enjoy the creative recycled paper collages each celebrating our beautiful Morro Bay. They are going to present these to you as gifts. Perfect. You guys... Okay, girls, if you could all turn around and face us, Council and Mayor, you can hold those pictures up. I'm going to get a picture really quickly. Thank you, art contest winners. We also want to warmly invite the community to our Month of the Child Family Dance on April 25th at the Morro Bay Community Center. For more information, you can contact the Recreation Office or visit our city website. And then we thank you again for honoring this special month and supporting the children and families of Morro Bay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much for our beautiful artwork. They're lovely. We really do appreciate it, and I love this program that we have in Morro Bay. I think many of us up here are children, my grandchildren, all are part of Kids Club, and couldn't do without it. I'll give them a second to get out, so they don't have to say thanks, kids. With that, I will move on to public comment. This public comment is for items not on the consent agenda. I have speaker slips, and I will ask three of you at a time just to follow up, starting with Mr. Walter Heath, Linda Winters, and Wendy Blacker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Walter Heath, resident of Morro Bay. Thanks for the opportunity to speak this evening. Just want to let everyone know that the public is invited to participate in one of 28 gardening projects that will improve our city's public spaces, including the installation of seven trees downtown. On Saturday, April 19th, we will convene at 8:30 AM at the Triangle Park located downtown where Morro Bay Boulevard and Harbor Street converge. And all of the projects will be completed by 11:00 AM per Morro Bay &amp; Bloom's customary social gardening model of beautifying Morro Bay two hours at a time. One of the projects is a standing-up-only installation of plants atop our city's new trash recycling container, so there's no kneeling required for that one. There is also a public art project, which will consist of painting specially-prepared galvanized metal buckets, and I spoke with our young artist before we started here, to free-form style, and the buckets are used as planters downtown and are quickly becoming kind of a signature feature as these children produce a bucket every year and can come back to the city, their city, and see what they did as a child. It's pretty awesome. And for those who have kind of a little bit more limited attention span, we've got river rocks, and those can be painted and will be displayed as well. This is the second annual I Love Morro Bay Community Building Through Shared Service event. This year, a community celebration featuring music, dancing, and games will take place from 12:00 to 3:00 at the Triangle Park. Pre-registration is requested so that all volunteers can be appropriately equipped with tools and safety gear, and we ask that you complete the online registration form at And you can see that up on your TV screen. And I see you have a little bit more time, so I'd like to share something that, go off script a bit, and share something for which I'm particularly grateful and maybe, you know, something for which I'm like really excited. First thing, I'm very grateful for our Morro Bay &amp; Bloom's relationship with Public Works Maintenance Division. The team is amazing. I think in many respects, we kind of take for granted that our lives are made more convenient by the work of that team in keeping all of the systems up and going, you know? That's one of the beauties of city life, right? But I particularly appreciate the trust relationship we have with that group, and they will be preparing the planting holes for the trees. So the planting is somewhat ceremonial in nature, but you know, it's great because we've got a lot of Girl Scouts, and they get their tree badge for, you know, for putting that tree in. So that's pretty cool. I see I'm out of time, so I will keep, and so thanks very much.
I feel like I'm back home. My name is Linda Winters, and I'm a 30-year resident here in Morro Bay, and I am so pleased to follow all the good news that has been expounded, and I'm going to give you some more. Those of you who may not know, I am involved in the Monday Night Dinner Project that has been held for the last 11 years, every single Monday night, right here in this hall. And last night, we had over 100 people that showed up to receive food from the food bank, clothing from the donation station, and a very hearty meal, which is popular, from St. Tim's Tognizini's Chicken. It's always a favorite of all who attend. And I am pleased to announce that we have had a tremendous amount of outreach for a lot of programs that are provided for the folks that attend. Capslow comes in. We've had John Elliott, who comes in and gives haircuts. Last night, Whitney came in and helped to serve. Jeff Echols was there the week before. There is one of my favorite outreach programs that I'm here tonight to give a premiere of, 805 Street Outreach Showers. And there's a lady who's probably standing behind me. Okay. Her name is Wendy Blacker, and she has some extraordinary, wonderful, good news for the people of, that come in and attend the Monday Night Dinners and for the city of Morro Bay. So with no further ado, please let me announce Ms. Wendy Blacker.
Thank you for letting me speak. I am here to actually say my good news. So I've been running the shower program at the library every first and third Monday of the month. Unfortunately, my insurance had lapsed because of my, my last grant was a calendar grant, and, you know, I didn't really know how to work calendar grants and fiscal year grants. I'm learning, you know? I'm new at this. So my NIAC insurance lapsed, so we had to pause it. And I did a GoFundMe, and KSBY came and interviewed me, and I was on the news several days in a row. And a private foundation donor gave me a very, very large donation. So not only do I have my NIAC insurance now, our shower trailer is being completely revamped, I have enough money to buy another shower trailer, fleet vehicles, and I'm expanding my program. I'm in discussions with the county to have them done every week now. So the unhoused community will be showered and cleaned every single week, and I can't tell you how much that means to them. Like, I call them my starfish. And a lot of my starfish have been housed now because of my shower program. So I just wanted to give you guys the good news. I'd say maybe in a couple of weeks, we'll pick up the shower trailer, and it'll be up and running again. That's it.
Thank you, Wendy. Congratulations. Thank you for all you do. Next up, I have Brandy Pettit, Janice Peters, and David Goad.
Good evening, Council members, Mayor Wixson, Brandy Pewitt.
I knew that, too. I'm sorry.
I'm here because April is also Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and so I just wanted to thank the Council for the proclamation recognizing April 2025 as National Sexual Assault Awareness Month. My name is Brandy Pewitt. I'm the Development Director with Lumina Alliance. Lumina is the only organization providing wraparound services for survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault. We do this by providing a 24-hour crisis hotline, emergency shelter, transitional housing, advocacy, therapy, and prevention. And did you know that in our county, the very first home for women who are survivors of domestic violence was actually here in Morro Bay in the mid-to-late 70s? So I wanted to just speak to what Sexual Assault Awareness Month is. It's a time where we dedicate in uniting our communities in the fight to end sexual violence. In the U.S., 1 in 4 women have experienced sexual assault, and 42% of men have either experienced sexual harassment or assault themselves, so we are all impacted. This year, we are shining a light on the resilience of survivors, and they often overlook realities of sexual violence in our community. While anyone can experience sexual assault, some groups, including undocumented individuals, transgender people, and those living with disabilities, face unique barriers to safety and support. This April, we reaffirm the commitment to ensuring that every survivor is seen, heard, and empowered. Together, we can illuminate pathways to a future where the survivors have the resources and support that they need to heal. Please remember that if you or anyone you know has experienced sexual or intimate partner violence and needs help, please call our 24-hour crisis hotline, 805-545-8888, to speak to one of our confidential advocates. In closing, we are so grateful for this proclamation and your ongoing support. On behalf of Lumina Alliance's Board of Directors, staff, and volunteers, we thank you all for taking action this month to create a safe, thriving, and equitable community for all. Thank you.
Brandy, do you want to do a plug for your event coming up?
Oh, thank you, yes. So our biggest fundraiser of the year is Lumina Nights. This year, it's May 1st, 2nd, and 3rd over at the Taskerial Pavilion. We have six dancers in the community, slow community dancing for us to raise money for our programs. Heather Moreno is dancing for us, Mary Verdin. And so we do have tickets still available for Thursday night. It's a lot of fun. You get to see people in the community dance. And again, just kind of learn more about the programs that we offer. And so for more information, luminaalliance.org. Thank you.
Hello, Janice Peters, resident of Morro Bay. I can't stay. I have a rehearsal to get to. But I did want to speak on Item 8A, about the hold time for dogs before they are euthanized at the animal shelter. Please extend it to at least seven, if not 10, working days, business days. It's too easy for a dog to get lost, and nobody knows where to look for them, and I would hate to have them turn up on day four if they euthanize them on day three. It just would be heartbreaking. So please consider lengthening that to at least seven to 10 business days. Also, I want to talk about Item 9B, the in-house attorney. I was on the council when we switched from having a paid firm to having our in-house attorney, who has served and is serving beautifully. And it was such an advantage. It made everything so much easier because he was aware of everything that was going on in our town, instead of having to hear about it secondhand or get it reported to him. He was there. And anytime we had questions on something, we didn't have to go pay for a phone call in 15 minutes or whatever. We went into his office and talked to him. The advice that he gave was wonderful, and it just, it does save money. I know it's a big thing up front for another employee, but I think in the long run, it saves money on everything in litigation and every mistake that you don't make because you have someone knowledgeable advising you all along. So you've got somebody who's an expert here in interviewing. I would hope that you do that, and look for another city attorney, and this one's a great one to get advice from. Thank you.
My name's David Goad. I prepared the presentation for five minutes. I've been cut down to three, so I've cut some meat out of this. I've been in your community for about 10 months, and when I saw the report on the 30 to 50 million on seawalls, I thought maybe you were going to hire Elon Musk to fly in Martians to do the work. I've been in the building industry for 50 years, from doing projects for Marlin Brando Grant, Tinker, Gabriel Kaplan, to 1,200, 1,100 units, excuse me, for Southland Capital. I've been a consultant, California Department of Real Estate on budgeting, and many other things. But I'm willing to come out of retirement if you, Council members, and Mayor, would like to meet with me in front of the Harbor Patrol, and then the next place up there, the Coleman Park. And I'll show you how you can do it for, I'm sure, under 100,000, probably under 50. As a matter of fact, I'll wager you I can get it done under 50, but you have to change your whole process. You never, ever use an engineer to prepare a plan to be bid on. They do not, they're not taught how to do it. They're only taught how to dig great, big holes and start over like everything's new, and that's where the cost comes. Now, I'll tell you an example. I had one of my twin-engine airplanes, the right engine mount that holds the engine and the landing gear onto the wing had corrosion. It's called intergranular corrosion. If it would have been steel, it would be called rust. So I was able to get ahold of one of the original engineers from Arrow Commander, and he was 80-something years old at the time. This was in 2004, I believe. And he quoted a cost of about $35,000 if we could find a new mount. They are nonexistent, we would have to make one, so it would have been more. I drew a plan on a napkin or a piece of paper. I gave it to a draftsman, so he could use a CAD system and create a blueprint. He then, in turn, gave it to a engineer with the Federal Aviation Administration. It was approved, and all the repairs were done for under $3,000. Now, I did the labor myself, but even if I would have hired the labor, it wouldn't have been over, it still would have been under $5,000. Because the engineer, and this was a very famous engineer, aeronautical engineer, he's not been trained for repairs. He's only been trained to go back to the starting point and work back forward. That's why this is costing California billions and billions of unnecessary funds to do repairs. So if the Council and Mayor would like to meet with me, nobody else, I will go through and show you a few things and get some of this stuff repaired and not wait for bids and all the rest of the things that you'll be going through. And you can get it, you can get it taken care of. Thank you.
I have two more speaker slips. David Yeo, Joe Yucich, and after that, public comment is open for items not on the agenda.
This is not agenda? This is not agenda?
This is public comment for items not on the agenda.
Agenda, okay. David Yeo from Morro Bay. I realize that you handle the funding for projects such as these, and my ask is that as you progress, that you avoid involving with elements that support Israel, that support genocide. You support children and the goodness of the people of this community. You do a wonderful job. I appreciate that. There are children that will not and have not had the opportunity to grow up in Palestine. And I hope that our community will not support corporations, bonds, or individuals that support Israel. I respect you, and I hope that you respect humanity enough to go beyond this community. This is a world problem. There are people who march in the streets, who are willing to risk their jobs, to risk their education, to risk their relations with their friends and their families, to support people they don't know, to support people they've never met. The entire world is marching for Palestine. No one will ever march for Israel. No one will ever march for Zionism. I am not an anti-Semite. My problem is with arrogance. I do not support people who think they are better than anyone else and everyone else. I will fight that to my dying day. I hope my tax dollars or the funds that come to this community will not be used to support the murder of the Palestinian children, who will not get to have awards like this on their time. Thank you very much for hearing me out.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Joe Yucich. I've been a resident of Morro Bay. We've been in Morro Bay roughly 60 years now. And over that time, I've watched Morro Bay make a lot of mistakes. But I want to commend you tonight for doing one great thing. You rehired Rob Schultz, okay? And I want to speak a little bit about this. When I ran for mayor, I got trounced, by the way. Bill Yates and Jamie Irons, Jamie wasn't going to rehire him. And I met with you, and I said, not only would I retain you if I was elected, I'd give you a royal title. So, you know, I want to just reiterate a story, and I don't know if you remember this. Back in 2008, on Java Street, we had a woman that passed away. She was elderly, and her children didn't want the house, so the, do you remember this? The granddaughter moved in, and it became a drug house. And we couldn't get them out of there. They were terrorizing the kids in the neighborhood. I had people climbing on my roof. It was just, it was terrorizing. You know, some people have rights they shouldn't. And Rob literally sat and met with the people on Java Street and crafted something so out of the box that it forced those people into a position they couldn't, you know, retain, and he closed that deal. So I want to thank you for that, and I'm glad you're back, and congratulations for bringing him here. Thank you.
Public comment is open. I have no more speaker slips.
My name is Deana Lundquist. I'm the CEO for the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to speak tonight on the street construction impact and an improvement plan. As a representative of the local business community, we recognize that our success is intertwined with the success of our city. The chamber is excited to see the city make such major improvements to the community, and we're committed to a partnership approach that benefits everyone through open communication, collaborative problem-solving, and proactive engagement. From April 1st through April 3rd, there was a significant disruption in business on our Embarcadero regarding our pre-treatment for the slurry work. There were unexpected city parking closures, slurry work dates and street closures were unclear, no advance notification to affected businesses. The business impact for this was one business reported $6,000 in total losses, $4,500 from one location, $1,500 from another, 41% decrease in transactions from another business, and the chamber fielded 20 to 30 calls from concerned businesses and community members. We realize our businesses are hardworking people, and our city strives to support them. In this case, there was a lack of communication and an opportunity to evaluate what we can do better to support all parties, to ensure that this lost revenue does not repeat itself, and all parties are duly informed. Some collaborative solutions after meeting with Mr. Qualick and Mr. Della yesterday is communication, communication, communication. Regular business community updates through multiple channels, including the chamber, dedicated points of contact in Public Works, including Mr. Della and Mr. Qualick, and quarterly meetings with Public Works to discuss business community questions or receive Public Works information. And Mr. Qualick and Mr. Della also provided another solution to city inspector review of signage and flyers prior to a project launch to ensure accuracy. This also includes our chamber messaging via our newsletter, flyers, social media, and direct emails. If Mr. Qualick, after I'm done speaking, would like to provide any other clarification or additional information that he knows of, that would be very much appreciated. I appreciate our city manager's apology to the businesses and acknowledgement. As a city with a culture of yes, we can, I think acknowledging, yes, we can do better, and then stepping forward and coming up with solutions. Thank you.
No one else for public comment? Step on up, going, going. For items not on the agenda.
This is for items not on the agenda or not on the consent agenda.
The consent agenda public comment will be next. If you can't stay, you're welcome to speak, but you only speak once on the item.
It's regarding business item 9A. I can wait if there will be a...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mayor and City Council. My name is Dan Sedley of Morro Bay. I wasn't going to speak on this topic, but I feel it relevant now, and I'll make this quick. This is not the forum to address national and world affairs that aren't specific and unique to Morro Bay. This is the place where we talk about relevant issues of things happening in Morro Bay. Talking about caring about one group of children, but not another group of children dying, that's a political cause. It's not, it's not two-way. It's just, it's just national and world affairs, and I think that has no place here in a Morro Bay City Council meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on items not on the agenda? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
There are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. With that, I will bring it back to council and close public comment. Anybody good? Perfect. With that, I will move on to the consent agenda and open public comment on the consent agenda, items 7A through 7H. AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
No raised hands.
Thank you. With that, I will bring it back. Last chance, anyone seeing none. I will close public comment on the consent agenda and bring it to council. Does anyone want to pull any items on the consent agenda? To my left, any items? Consent? To my right?
I'm not looking at it. I'm trying to find it right now, sorry. Oh, okay.
And, oh, I guess I don't. Okay. Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Yeah, move to approve consent items 7A through 7H.
I second.
Thank you. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And with that, we will move on. And with that, we will move on. We have two public hearing items this evening. Introduction, or excuse me, introduced and ordinance repealing and replacing Title VII animals in the Morro Bay Municipal Code, and this will be the police department. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor Wickson. To start off, we actually have kind of two items under this item. And first, I'm going to introduce Eric Anderson, our Animal Services Manager, and he is going to provide a presentation on scope of services and cost allocation methods for San Luis Obispo County Animal Services.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here this evening. I'm always glad to be able to come out and talk about animal services and the work we're doing around the county and for the cities as well. Chief Watkins asked me to talk a little bit about the operation in an overview sense and give you a little bit of an idea about the services that are covered, the cost structure, and how those are allocated out to the cities. So Animal Services... So Animal Services has three broad areas that we provide with regards to our services. The first one, and I think what people think of very commonly, is our shelter services operation. I should point out that Animal Services provides animal care and control functions throughout the entire county. We are a county organization, so of course we provide that within the seven, or the incorporated area of the county. But we also serve each of the seven incorporated cities as well, providing full-service animal care and control in Morro Bay, San Luis Obispo, Paso, and so on. The shelter, we operate the county's only open intake shelter. That means that whatever animal comes in, we wind up having to take. We don't have the luxury of sort of closing the door and turning animals away or telling people that we're full. And the shelter that we operate is in San Luis Obispo, just the other side of Cuesta. We're fortunate enough to have occupied that facility about two years ago and has been a significant improvement to the ability of our operation and our community to provide humane and compassionate and appropriate animal care for the community's stray, unwanted, and unhomed animals. The shelter itself has a number of different programs that we operate. The first is our animal intake and impound. And we bring in somewhere between 3,000 to 5,000 animals a year, depending on the year. We're currently seeing increases in those numbers, and that tends to occur when we have times with a little bit more economic difficulty. We see animals coming into the shelter a little bit more frequently. The majority of animals that we receive are dogs and cats coming into the shelter, and in fact, in the other activities, field services and so forth. That's probably about 90 to 95% of the animals that we deal with. However, we deal with all sorts of other animals. Currently, we have a miniature horse and a donkey, a sugar glider, and over time, there's probably not a lot of animals that we haven't wound up dealing with. The majority of animals that come into the shelter come in as strays. That's probably about 60, 70% of the animals that we get. Those are animals that are picked up in the field by our animal control officers running at large and brought in, or that may be found by numbers of the public and brought into the shelter and held there for owner identification and reclaim. We also receive a number of animals from the public, animal owners who are no longer able or willing to care for their animals and needing a place to place those for rehoming. And so we do owner surrenders as well. A smaller portion of the animals in the shelter come in through rabies quarantine. So in the event that animals are possibly exposed to rabies or have bitten a person causing a public health concern there, we do impound some of those animals and place them under observation for illness issues to ensure that we're addressing any public health issues related to rabies infection. And then the two smaller areas of animal intake that we have are custodial impounds, which are animals that have been picked up usually by police departments or other emergency response agencies in the course of their duties, where maybe they've arrested somebody for a DUI and they happen to have a dog in the car or something along that line. While the person goes down to custody at jail, we impound the animal there at our facility. Sometimes people that are on mental health holds or medical issues where they don't have next of kin available to take the animal for them. And then additionally, a number of animals that we receive every year come in as confiscations, usually from our field officers that are conducting animal welfare or abuse investigations and determine that they need to be removed from their position there at home. In addition to the shelter service of intakes, we do animal placement. We work very hard to get positive outcomes for all the animals that come into the shelter. I'm glad to say that I think we do a pretty good job of that. We have consistently, for years now, had a live outcome rate of over 90%, meaning that virtually every animal coming into the shelter is going to wind its way back up to its original owner, placed in a new home or worth a rescue. That does include animals that have been hit by a car, have significant medical issues, or maybe severe temperamental problems and aggressive behavior are included in that statistic. Our return to owner rate for dogs is about 40%, which is pretty high relatively. We also do a lot of adoptions, and then alternately with, we partner with a number of rescue organizations like Woods Humane or other nonprofit organizations around the county, and in fact, around the state, and even in some cases nationally. We've transported animals as far as Connecticut to get them placed in a positive outcome there. We do provide euthanasia services as well. Some of those are animals that are euthanized at the shelter, or animals which have been impounded, and for generally medical or behavioral reasons can't be either safely placed back out into the community, or it would determine it would not be humane to continue out and try and preserve those animals. We also do private euthanasia services for members of the community, particularly, it's a little bit more low cost, and so that tends to be something that some of the low-income families aren't able to acquire through veterinary hospitals, and so we provide that service to them. And then we do veterinary care and services. The new facility has a pretty nice setup in terms of medical treatment, and we're able to do minor surgeries, dental cleanings, and things along that line. Those services are performed for those animals that are in our custody. We don't provide medical services for the general public. We don't have that capacity, but we do provide a lot for the animals that are there in the shelter. And then in addition, animals which we're not able to perform those level of care at the shelter, we work with a number of outside veterinary hospitals to provide more extensive surgical procedures like orthopedic surgeries and advanced diagnostics. The second area of our operation is our field services unit. These are the ones that you're probably familiar with, seeing the guys out in the field driving around the animal control truck. The majority of our field service response really relate to animal nuisances. That seems to be the most common issue, so things like dogs barking, running around at large, knocking over trash cans, that sort of thing. And then also, collection of animals that may have been running at large and have been hit by a car or found deceased along the side of the road. While that takes up a lot of their time, we actually have a strong focus on making sure that we're working to preserve public safety when it comes to relation with aggressive or dangerous animals in the community as well. So officers frequently and rarely respond to menacing and aggressive animals that are roaming at large, presenting risks to the public. And then also, in responding to reports of animal bites, both in terms of the public safety aspect and as well as doing rabies management and response there. And then we have civil procedures that we deal with with consistent or repeat aggressive instances to help make sure that we are preserving public safety in that regard. Animal control officers also are involved in responding to animal welfare complaints and reports of abuse, neglect, or also injured animals. So while not the bigger portion of their job, again, it's one of the things that we focus on strongly to ensure that we're promoting humane and compassionate animal treatment throughout the community with regards to abuse. We don't see a lot of intentional or willful abuse, but we certainly see quite a bit of negligent care. Oftentimes, that's simply just a matter of education and so forth. Our effort in these responses generally tends to be focused on education, outreach, and supportive animals and their owners, trying to reach a positive resolution rather than being enforcement-oriented in those respects. We also respond to reports of injured animals that are found out in the public without their owners there. So for example, a dog that might have been hit by a car and is in the roadway with nobody available to care for it, officers will respond and transport it for medical care. We do rabies control with the field officers, and so that involves both rabies issues related to domestic animals. And this is the one area where we do step over some into wildlife management as well. Rabies is endemic in the state of California. Last year, we had seven positive rabies cases in San Luis Obispo County that were reported here as well. Those were all wildlife. We've not had a domestic animal rabies case in the county for decades, but in large part, that is due to active surveillance and management programs. I will say that of the positive cases we had, we did have a number of domestic animals, cats, and dogs that were exposed, and one person as well. So there was requirement for post-exposure treatment for those individuals. And then we do field services assistance to other agencies responding, whether it happens to be the police department that's doing a warrant service with aggressive animals on the property, fire department, or other agencies where they may be in the course of their work encountering animals and need assistance in either managing that situation or providing aid. And then the third portion of our operations, our administrative services area, and these are the people in the shelter generally that are helping people when they come in on the phone and so forth. They're responsible for doing transactions, including processing the adoption requests, redeeming and processing the reunification of animals with their owners. They're the ones that do the animal licensing services. They receive lost and found animal reports, cross-reference those with our records in our shelter to work to get animals back home. I'm glad to say that we actually have been able to see a number of animals actually reunited with their owners in the last few years through their efforts and through microchipping processes without actually ever even coming into the shelter, and so it helps divert that quite a bit. They're also responsible for doing permits and issue commercial operation permits for breeders, pet stores, and so forth, as well as hobby breeders and small-time, you know, couple of dogs in the house where they're selling new layers of puppies and so forth. They process animal assistance certifications and responsible for our record management. So you can see the breakdown of staffing in each one of those areas. The department itself has 24 and a half full-time employees split between our field services, shelter operations, and admin services there. In addition to our paid staff in each of those areas, we utilize honor farm and alternative work program or diverted sentencing individuals to provide a lot of our work, and that helps mitigate some of our staffing costs. And then we have a great staff of, I've got under here more than 60 volunteers. Last I checked, it was about 180 active volunteers with animal services. Some of them are in the shelter very frequently, some never come in, but they're very active at home fostering animals and helping to nurse animals over injuries and illness or bottle-feed kittens or any of those number of things, including a number of people out in Morro Bay that do great for us that way. Looking at our fiscal operations, for the current fiscal year, Animal Services operating or total budget is $5.3 million. That split, a portion of that is about $1 million, which goes to the debt service on the bonds which were used to finance the new facility. The remainder, 4.3 million, is our operating budget for the provision of the services to the entire county. If you look to the right, you can kind of see a breakdown on that. As with a lot of organizations, our primary expenses are within our salaries and benefits area. Services and supplies then accounts for about a quarter of our operation, and then about 20% is related to the debt service. With regards to revenue, Animal Services charges fees and collects fines for some of the functions and activities that we perform, and that comes in at about $184,000 annually. Licensing for animals comes in close to $1 million a year. And then the remainder of our operational expenses is covered through service contracts and fees assessed to the cities as well as the county's general fund, and that's about $1.6 million per each of those categories. This shows you a little bit of a breakdown on how those fees are distributed through the county and through the different cities there. You can see the county makes up the bulk at just under half of our operating costs, and this is the distribution of our non-fee or our non-fine-based revenue. You can see Morro Bay there is the kind of blue sliver there at about 3%. The way that we allocate out our cost is we have a tracking application that allows us to track virtually everything we do, every call for service we receive, every animal that's brought into the shelter, every adoption, every license that's sold. So each time that happens, we tag that to a jurisdiction, either one of the cities or the unincorporated area. We do the same with revenue. So when we receive revenue for licensing, when somebody pays an adoption fee, if they pay a fine, that revenue is also tagged to the city at which it originates from. That allows us to really kind of summarize what the total cost for each of those eight stakeholders are, the seven cities and the county. And then we apply the credit for all the revenue received from each of those individual stakeholders to the cost. The balance then becomes the assessed fee for service, and so it's kind of a smooth model for being able to accurately distribute out costs to each of the stakeholders and give credit for the revenue. So the method that's used to assess the county fees and the county costs is the same that's applied to our relations with each of the cities as well. The numbers on the bottom kind of show you for the city of Morro Bay, your distribution and usage there. So for example, you can see that the shelter usage for the city, you're about 4% of our shelter usage, as well as about 4% of our revenue. For field services, it's about 6% of our usage and about 8% of the revenue, and then licensing comes in at 8 as well. And that gives you a total cost of $123,658 for the current fiscal year. Applying the revenue that generated from Morro Bay at $47,000, then the service contract fee for the year comes out to about $75,000. With regards to operational costs and management and cost mitigation, because certainly I know that's your concern, it's the county's concern as well, and in an effort to be responsible to the fees and the funds that were being provided, we try to be as tight with that as we can. We've looked to decrease costs in a couple of different areas. The primary area that we've seen a change has been in the management of community cats and how we're handling those, decreasing the shelter intake and associated costs on the city with regards to those animals. That also aligns with current developments and trends in the animal welfare field as well. But the reality is that we have a pretty narrow margin. There's not a lot of activities or things that we can do or cut. Most of our services are mandated under state law or some other program that we're required to provide. There's not a lot of things that we could discontinue or say these are fully elective operations. Really, the opportunity that we have for decreasing costs to the cities and the opportunities that you have for decreasing the assessed fee comes from the increased revenue. If you'll recall, that you're given credit for each dollar that's generated from the city against the actual cost. So the more compliance we get with licensing, the more people actually adopt from the shelter, the more that we get that sort of revenue generated, that helps decrease the costs that the city experiences directly then. Additionally, decreasing the service fees would be another method of addressing that and exercising responsible pet management practices. And I got to give shout-out to Morro Bay. Actually, you guys are one of the lowest-usage communities around the county and do a good job of this. But to the extent that it's possible to increase, again, owner reclaim or, you know, making sure that animals have identification, that they stay home, those sorts of things, that decreases the shelter demand. And then we spoke a little bit about increasing revenue through activities. Additionally, the way that we work the service model in the years that, on occasion where we have year-end surplus of significance, we usually back that out and redistribute that back out to the cities based on the proportionate share that they paid into it as well. So that doesn't stay with the county there. This gives you a look at sort of trends on animal services activities over the last 15 years here. This is a representation of the per capita intake of the eight different stakeholders, so the county and then the seven cities here. The dotted line is county-wide average for animals being brought into the shelter, both as stray, owner surrendered, confiscated, custodial impounds, or any other source. Morro Bay, you can see, is the red line there, so it's kind of tagged in with everybody else, a little bit difficult to see, but actually a little bit below the county-wide average there. This breaks this out, looking at the number of owner surrenders that we have. This breaks this out, looking at the number of owner surrenders that we have. It's kind of a noisy graph because that does seem to be a little bit fluctuant over the community at different times. Again, Morro Bay is represented in the red, sort of in the middle cluster there. And then looking at the stray animal intake, so this excludes owner-surrendered animals or confiscations and so forth. Again, looking at a distribution over the last 10 years or so, Morro Bay, you can see, kind of hovers down there in that cluster, but really towards the bottom. So the community does pretty well at maintaining animals at home and not putting a burden on the shelter. And then this is that same information just broken out between dogs and cats. Again, it's a little bit small, but again, Morro Bay remains down at the bottom of that population. With regards to annual licensing costs and compliance, this is sort of looking at the distribution of licensing compliance between the different communities. There's a formula that we use to kind of determine what percentage of dogs in the community are actually licensed. The dotted line there, again, is the county-wide average, and Morro Bay is the red line that really pretty much just follows that line pretty closely. So that concludes the information I want to present to you. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have on this. I'm available. I know Chief Watkins has further presentation regarding the ordinance revision as well, and I'm available for questions on that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. Well, thank you for that presentation, Eric. I really appreciate that. And good evening, everyone, mayor, council members, Morro Bay residents. Thank you for that presentation and provide that scope of service and as well as the cost allocation methods. Eric's going to be here during my presentation, so if there's any questions that I can't answer, he can certainly bail me out on that, so I appreciate that. We are here to discuss the Animal Service Ordinance's amendment. A little bit of background, City of Morro Bay contracts with the county of San Luis Obispo to provide animal control services to the city. The Animal Services contract is coordinated and funded as an expense item in the police department budget, which is why I'm sitting here before you giving this presentation. The county has recently updated their animal service, excuse me, animal control ordinance, Title IX of the county code, and has asked each contract city to adopt their code by reference into the municipal code to streamline and simplify the enforcement of animal control throughout the county. So I have a brief presentation, and we'll get into a few new things that are coming with Title IX. But I think that you'll find a lot of these items are similar to what we've had in the past for years here in Morro Bay. And those similarities are going to continue to carry on with Title IX. So what we're going to talk about tonight is our current Morro Bay Municipal Code Title VII designated as animals. Also, the San Luis Obispo County Code Title IX designated animals. Both of these codify all animal control services within the city and the county. The City of Morro Bay Municipal Code contains the rules and regulations related to animal regulations in the city. Animal control officers from the county are tasked with enforcing the regulations of each contract city, creating a confusing mix of numerous municipal codes combined with county code that require research and analysis depending on which jurisdiction they're currently responding to. So you can imagine for our county animal control officers entering one city to enforce animal code can get a bit confusing, which is why we're here today and why the county has asked us to codify or assemble these similar codes so that it makes it easier for enforcement across the county as we all are contracted with county animal services. Having each contract city adopt Title IX of the county code will provide a standardized set of regulations that can be more easily enforced, create continuity throughout the county, while still allowing each city to keep additional regulations that are not contained in Title IX. And we'll discuss those in a moment. City of Grover Beach and the City of San Luis Obispo were the first to adopt Title IX of the county code by reference. So I know Eric showed the picture of the animal services facility just out past Cuesta. It's a really nice facility. This facility opened in September of 2022. If you have not been to that facility, it's a one-of-a-kind. And really, this is a 15,000-square-foot facility. The old animal services facility was only 7,000 square feet, if I'm correct. And so that gives you an idea of how many more animals can be treated and cared for humanely with this new facility. And if you haven't been out there, I would certainly encourage you to take a visit. So animal control officers enforce regulations in all cities, creating a confusing mix of laws. Most city municipal codes related to animals are not frequently updated due to effort and expenses, expense required. County Animal Services asks each city to adopt the county code Title IX by reference to create standardization throughout the county. And we are under contract with county animal services for the services they provide. And under our current contract, and this is actually language from our city contract, Page 5, Section 2, Under City Obligations, the city will adopt either by direct incorporation in the municipal code or by way of reference, animal control ordinances which are in conformity to and not in substantial conflict or in variation from Title IX of the San Luis Obispo code. And obviously, that makes sense. If we're asking them to enforce our laws, they need to be somewhat similar. Otherwise, you have quite a bit of conflict and an inability to enforce anything. So a status update on some of the other cities in this process. The county of San Luis Obispo updated Title IX on December 8, 2023. Since then, the City of Grover Beach adopted the county code by reference on July 22, 2024. City of San Luis Obispo was right behind them in August 20 of 2024. City of Pismo Beach adopted the county code by reference on March 25 of this year. And the City of Paso Robles adopted the county code by reference just prior to that, January 15 of 2025. As you all know, we've been pushed back a few months for a lot of different reasons, but we are here tonight. And then the City of Atascadero and the City of Arroyo Grande are still working toward adoption. So I want to give you a little bit of an idea of the process and review when this came forward. And Eric asked us to bring this to our council, city councils, was the process and review. So county code Title IX and Morro Bay's city code Title VII were reviewed for similarities and differences by county animal services, mainly Eric and also myself and city staff. Most existing city Title VII sections are contained in a similar form in county Title IX and can be rescinded. The city maintains the ability to keep specific regulations in Morro Bay, so we still have the freedom to do some of these special things that are unique to Morro Bay. All efforts were made to keep animal control regulations as status quo as possible within our city. So in the staff report and here briefly, I just wanted to make note of the proposed rescinding for likeness in the county code. So under 7.04 General, other than Section 7.04130, all of the other general sections under the 7.04 were very similar, if not identical, to the county code. So the recommendation is to maintain those. We just rescind the city code and take on by reference the county code Title IX. Under Dogs, 7.08, those are also very similar, other than the minor modification to a leash law that changes a loophole, and that's 7.08020. And then the holding of animals, 7.08.095, which we will discuss here briefly. Related to Cats, 7.12.014, all the way through to 12.050. Again, similarities, so we are talking about identical regulations, other than the impound of strays, which is, we'll discuss that on 7.12.010. And then the one section there is identical, 1.16.010, other animals, poultry and birds. So this is the highlights on some of the changes from the Title VII to Title IX county code resulting in minor changes. The one I spoke briefly about was the leash law. That addresses a loophole in the city code regarding dogs on private property in other yards. And so when I was speaking to Eric, one of the things that his officers have come in to issue with is citations that are being ruled against because the code section didn't make account for private property of others. It was simply public property. And so this closes a loophole. So if an animal gets out of a yard and ends up in a neighbor's yard three doors down, that's still considered private property. So that closes that loophole. So when it's private property that is not of the owner. So that's the only thing that that really changes under the leash law. And then the next law is the 7.08.095. County code establishes holding periods for pets and livestock. The city code holds no distinction for livestock for Morro Bay. And I wanted to take a moment to clarify the holding period. Current Morro Bay Municipal Code, 7.08.070, basically reads as soon as possible, but no later than 24 hours after impounding any dog currently licensed under the provisions of the chapter. The division shall notify the registered owner or person having control of the dog by written or oral communication that such dog is impounded and that it must be redeemed within three days from the date of such communication. So that's the current Morro Bay code that we follow. So remember that, it's all about the time of communication and when that communication received. Once that owner has received communication that the animal services facility has their dog impounded, they have three days from that point to then go and claim the dog. If they don't claim that dog, then it can be put up for adoption. It can be, if it's not adoptable, then it can be euthanized at that point. The current Morro Bay Municipal Code under 7.08.095, and this one's a little muddy, if you will, after I read it. It's rather confusing and all over the place. And keep in mind, this was probably a good 25 to 35 years ago that this city code was enacted. The division must hold, so under the 7.08.095, it states the current municipal code for Morro Bay. The division must hold impounded animals for a period of six business days, not including the day of impoundment unless the division is open one weekend evening until 7, or is open one weekend day, or has fewer than three employees, is not open during all regular weekday business hour, and permits owners to claim animals by appointment when the shelter would otherwise be closed, in which case the holding period shall be four business days. So you can see kind of the, it's difficult to follow, so I don't know what necessarily the holding period is. And so when I go to the new county code that will take on the holding, holding period for household pets, again, its notification is key. And I'll just summarize, but under this code, it's no less than three days, not including the day of impoundment. And that's once that notification is made. A calculation of holding period for animals impounded with current identification, as defined in a previous section, shall commence upon notification to the owner or custodian of the impoundment. If such notification is not made, the holding period for such animals shall be no less than seven days, right? So now we've got notifications made, it's three days to come and pick up your animal. If notification is not able to be made, it then expands to seven days. So it's all about the notification. Saw a lot of concerns expressed about the holding periods, and I completely understand that. But one of the things that I think is important, and in speaking to Eric, is this code is consistent with mandated holding periods currently in place by both state and local laws. It does not change or reduce holding times from what they have been for several years. So this is really what we've been, under our city municipal code, Morro Bay, it was much more confusing than the one that I just read. So it really kind of clarifies a few things. While the mandated minimum holding time is three days, it is animal services' general policy and practice to apply a holding period of five days, not including Sundays or holidays, when the shelter is closed to the public. In the event that an animal has identification, the proposed code does require a full seven-day holding period if the owner cannot be notified of the impound. So it's still, it continues with our previous code, so it's the same kind of wording. Shelter currently operates at capacity most times of the year. Extending the holding time would require the construction of a new or expanded facility with three to four times the current capacity. The average reclaim time for dogs impounded at animal services facility is 1 to 7 days for dogs, and 2.0, excuse me, 1.7 days for dogs, 2.2 days for cats. Extended hold times are unlikely to result in increased reclaim rates, but would require the shelter to hold unadoptable animals for extended periods of times, putting other adoptable animals at risk of euthanasia in order to accommodate the additional space requirement. Moving on to animal regulations unique to Morro Bay and therefore maintained under this code is 7.04130, and that's appeal for permit revocation or denial heard by Morro Bay City Council. So under Title IX, that appeal would be heard by the Board of Supervisors. And as I've gone through this and spoken to staff, one thing that we know is that if a Morro Bay resident has an appeal or a dispute about maybe a revocation of a permit, they would much rather that come to our city council for decision. So that was something that I held back and made sure that any appeal or any kind of citation given that is going to be a permit revocation or an appeal of some sort, that would stay with our city and would not go to the Board of Supervisors. And then, of course, as a designated wild bird sanctuary under 7.16.010, all the way down to 015, we have our special codes designated for our wild bird sanctuaries. We have some different codes as it relates to poultry, rabbits and other fowl, livestock, and then the keeping of pygmy livestock. So those are unique to Morro Bay and will be maintained under these, under this new ordinance. So some of the new regulations, and these are regulations that did not exist under our current Title VII Morro Bay Municipal Code. One at the top there is prohibits unauthorized feeding of animals on property not their own. So we have a picture of, that is actually a Morro Bay squirrel. So that is out at The Rock somewhere. I did not take the picture, and I'm sorry, I don't know who did, so I can't give credit. But that's something that we deal with on a regular basis, is people feeding our wildlife. And so that actually helps our city because that was not something that was in our current ordinance. Next section is places restriction on, under 008, places restrictions on keeping animals designated dangerous or vicious. Nobody should want that. 009 places restrictions on keeping dangerous and wild animals, venomous snakes, wolf, hybrid dogs, and other types of dangerous animals. I certainly don't want to deal with a venomous snake. 010 requires motorist-striking domestic animals to stop and render aid or make official notification. That's just the right thing to do and certainly important to have within our city code. And then 9.03.003 is variance permit for keeping additional animals over standard limitation. And I tell you, through my communication with Eric and the way that animal services operates, there are a lot of variances if there is a special circumstance. If there's something that is needed for the best care for the animal, animal services does their very best to make sure that those accommodations are made. New regulations continued, and I know that this is some of the New regulations continued, and I know that this is some of the response that I got from our community, and I certainly appreciate all of the emails regarding the concerns. But under 9.03.001 requires microchipping for adult dogs and cats. And then 9.03.004 prohibits cat owners from allowing unaltered cats to roam at large, allows finders of unaltered cats roaming at large to have the cat altered at their expense. So if somebody finds an unaltered cat that's roaming, and that's just to control our pet population and cat population. I've experienced large colonies of cats, stray and feral cats, and it is not something that you want to take over any part of your community. It is very difficult to get that under control once you, once it gets out of control. One of the things I wanted to make sure that people are aware of is animals will not be confiscated for these violations. There are low-cost options for vaccinations and microchipping. Animals will not be retained due to inability to pay. So the only way that a microchip would be recommended or placed as a requirement is if you have an animal that is continuously maybe going, leaving the residence, leaving the property, is, you know, causing a call for service on a routine basis. And it's important to make sure that those animals, for whatever reason, they're becoming loose and running free, is they're able to be returned to their owners. And on the microchipping section, the provision, it says in Section B, "The provision shall not apply to," and it says, "dogs or cats for which a veterinary license to practice within the state of California has issued a certificate indicating that such procedure would pose a serious risk to the health or life of the animal. Such certificates shall be issued in a form of prescribed, as prescribed by the division." And then in subsection two, "dogs or cats over eight years of age on January 1, 2022." So this isn't a requirement for animals that are in their elderly state. And in reviewing some of the items in reference to microchipping, I just want to highlight a few things. For those of you who don't understand what microchipping is, microchips are very small, biologically inert identification devices implanted under an animal's skin through an injection, very similar to the administration of a vaccination right behind the dog's neck. While many owners do place identification tags on their dogs, this is not a common practice with regards to cats. Additionally, there is no local code requiring animals to have a tag. Collars and tags may be removed or come off of the animal if it escapes or is stolen. Tags often wear over time and become unreadable. Many coming, many animals that go into the shelter have no identification of any type, making it difficult to reunite them with their owners and extending shelter holding times. This increases the risk of euthanasia for these and other animals. Conversely, microchipped animals are often successfully returned to their owners before ever coming into the shelter, because each animal control officer actually has a wand that they can read the chip number, and that gives the information of the owner. I've experienced this a few times, not here, but certainly in the valley. That was something that we checked on a regular basis when we would find an animal that was out wandering. The animal control service officer would come up, they would have the little reader, and we would be able to reunite that dog without it even going to the shelter, which is the goal, after all. This is a California state law, and it requires that all animals coming into the custody of Animal Services be microchipped before returning to their owners. And that, again, is just to control the pet population and keep public safety at the And I mentioned this before, but Animal Services activities are complaint-driven, meaning that this code would only be enforced if those situations where an animal is already the subject of a complaint or enforcement action for some other reason. This ordinance simply places the requirement at the front end of the process, rather than leaving it to be done upon the animal's release. And like I said before, if the owner is unable to pay because of budgetary constraints, the animal will not be maintained. They will be released back to the owner for release. So it's not a confiscation of the animal if they're not microchipped. Just a few more new regulations. 9.04.005 authorizes Animal Services to vaccinate, provide medical care for impounded animals. That's an important thing, especially when you're operating a shelter. 007 defines holding periods for livestock, which was not something the city of Morro Bay had previously. 05.006 requires individual port of animal sales. 06.002 requires commercial animal operation permits. 06.005, emergency notifications to related, to inspections of breeders. 07.007, assistance animal identification tags. So what that is, is if you have a service or assistance animal, and they are provided a ID tag or a registration from another entity, if you brought that animal into the city of Morro Bay, that animal would maintain that same ID number. They would not reissue a number. And that's all that's saying, is that you're not going to have multiple if the dog is already registered. And then 9.08.002 establishes a requirement for owners of cats allowed to roam outdoors to have those cats vaccinated against rabies. There was some concern about vaccination of cats, indoor cats, and this does not address indoor cats. It is for cats that are free roaming in a neighborhood, because those cats are, because of their inquisitive nature, they're more likely to come into contact with maybe a bat that's carrying rabies, which Eric had mentioned earlier, which we do have cases in San Luis Obispo County. So indoor cats are not subject to this code. So if you have an indoor cat, the vaccination requirement is not there. So I'll kind of, this is the final part of our presentation, and I think it was something that was important certainly to our community, and I wanted to make sure that we touched on this, and that's the new regulations related to euthanasia. So to date, Morro Bay has not had a city regulation regarding euthanasia of animals. So essentially, Morro Bay has been under the care and control of the county Animal Services forever. We've never had a euthanasia code within our Morro Bay municipal code. Understanding the concerns should be the last resort. Efforts should be made to treat injured, sick animals. I think you heard from Eric that that is their number one goal, is to make sure that animals that are received into the shelter are either given back to their, reunited with their owners, adopted, or given to rescue shelters. Fostering and placement with nonprofit animal rescues should be utilized. Eric mentioned the number 160 volunteers who help with that fostering, especially of sick or injured animals. And we now have, with this new code, we now have a documented code that regulates euthanasia. With that being said, I'd like to highlight the county Animal Services' response to our community's concerns. And Eric had already touched a little bit on a few of these, but I just wanted to make sure that I let you guys know. Animal Services strives to achieve positive outcomes for all sheltered animals, whether that means getting them returned to their owners, adopted into new homes or placed with rescue groups. Animal Services routinely works with rescue partners, placing hundreds of animals each year with local and regional humane organizations, such as, some as far away as Washington State and Connecticut. Animal Services has consistently maintained a live animal outcome rate of over 90%. This factors in all animals coming into the shelter, including ones with severe illness and injuries. So that 10% are animals that it would be inhumane to allow them to continue their life. So that's only about 10% of the total intake, which is a very good number. There are multiple state laws already established with regulating the euthanasia of sheltered animals in California. This includes regulation of the methods, procedures, and staff qualifications that may be used in that process. Animal Services adheres rigidly to those parameters, and all staff performing the procedure are appropriately trained and licensed through the California State Veterinary Medical Board. And I know that, and those are excellent questions, and certainly the emails that came in with those questions, I appreciated that. I've learned a lot about certainly Animal Services and the complexity of that. I was, I sat actually on a board of a no-kill shelter for many years in the valley, and it is a tough business. And it is a heartbreaking business, and it's something that for, even if you like animals a little bit, it's not an easy service to provide, and it's something that's very necessary. So that concludes my presentation, and I'll take questions. But the recommendation that I have for council tonight is to repeal and replace Title VII, animals of the Morro Bay municipal code to adopt and incorporate by reference San Luis Obispo County Code Title IX, and retain the certain city requirements regarding animals. And with that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that. Thank you again, Dr. Henderson. Questions for the chief or Animal Services Director tomorrow?
Thank you for that very thorough report. What constitutes notification?
So within the code, it's either oral or written communication. So generally, what we try to do, if we have an animal, and I can have Eric speak to what his staff does, but generally, if we have an animal, we're going to do a neighborhood canvas. If we talk to neighbors, we will try to figure out if we can't find, if the owner is not home, we will do everything that we can. If they've maybe gone for a medical reason to a hospital, we will make sure that we get information to that individual that the animal has been impounded for whatever reason, and then they can get their animal at Animal Services. So communication or that contact is, first and foremost, what we try to do is that oral communication, that personal contact. And then if that contact isn't able to be made, when the animal is delivered to Animal Services, I'll let him speak on that, but I would imagine that if they can't get that oral communication as well, then a written communication would be next in line.
Sure. So again, it's oral or written. We utilize a lot of different methods and actually duplicate that as much as we can with the idea that we really do want to get the communication in, so people can come get their animals and we get them home. Oral communication that we use is either, you know, if we know where the owners are at, trying to contact them directly in person. If we have a phone number for them that is on record, or if it's on a tag on the animal, we'll make a phone call to that number and make sure that we leave messages there. If we have an email for that person, if it's, if they're registered, the animal's registered with us and we have an email, we will email them. We don't do written mail notifications, simply because of the, due to the timeline, it's just not really timely. But to the extent that we're unable to contact somebody either through phone or email directly, very often, we will send an officer out to the house to post a notification at the residents that indicates the animals at Animal Services, giving them contact information and direction to reclaim and so forth. Certainly, if the officer knows at the time that the animal is impounded, our effort is to get the animal home without covering, coming in. But very often, if they're out working during the day, people are at work, we don't really have the option of leaving them there since they're unsecured. But at that time, the officer would leave a notice at the address as well. So those are the primary means that we use, really whatever we can get ahold of, and whatever contact information we use, we'll do that and duplicate those as much as possible.
So if it's just a phone call, and you have, you have, one option was three days, and then seven days if you can't get ahold of them, but you're not talking to them either way necessarily, so what, I don't understand the difference.
Right. So again, and that would be minimum. So normally, what we'll wind up doing in those situations where an animal's been at the shelter for an extended period, after that first day, they're not coming, after second day, we will continue to make phone calls on a daily basis to the numbers that we have, continuing to leave messages. That may trigger an officer going out to the address again. And then we also provide a daily recording of all the animals that have been brought into the shelter, so owners that are looking for their animals can call that, get a description. All the animals in the shelter are posted on our webpage, most of the time with photographs. So we're trying to put that information out for people that are looking for their animals as well, is accessible to them at that time.
Thank you. And then I was just curious, what are the wild animals that have rabies?
So rabies is endemic through the state of California, and we see it in a diversity of wildlife. It is an infection that is really something that can infect almost any mammal. So the primary vector, or the primary reservoir in the state of California are bats, but we see in other areas of the country that skunks and raccoons and foxes are also vectors and have a serabar reservoir there. While bats are the primary here, we've detected rabies, and skunks and raccoons are often commonly ones that come up with rabies as well. We've experienced in the county coyotes, foxes, other animals. Not here locally, but nationally, there's record of infections, not just terrestrial mammals or bats, but also in marine mammals, so seals and some of the pinnipeds have actually been found with rabies infections as well.
Okay, thank you.
Speaking of rabies, just a couple of questions. If you have an issue with an animal here in Morro Bay, is there a number, do we call the police department? I mean, is it the police that we call, or do we call Animal Services? I'm just curious.
Well, both works, and we'll get your response. So what we generally do is if it's after hours, the call goes to the police department, the officers will respond, and then deem whether or not an Animal Services response is necessary. That's very rare, unless you have an animal that's in, having severe illness, or needs immediate medical attention, or potentially is vicious, something like that. But during the day, you really have an option. So if you're calling the police department, and you go through dispatch, and you talk about an animal-type call, dispatch then has the ability to then transfer that call to Animal Services if it's during the operating hours of their staff, or if it's something that is a better call for service for our officers, then our officers would go. It really just depends on the type of call, type of, you know, time of day, weekends, night times, things like that.
Last question.
If I might expand on that.
On the squirrels, you know, I can't eat at The Rock anymore. I mean, the squirrels are all over you on the benches. I have to stand up to eat. And I know that we, at one point in time, did euthanize the squirrels. I mean, I don't mean to be harsh, but it is a major, major issue. Have you ever addressed it as Animal Services out there at The Rock?
We've not addressed that specifically. That would be a wildlife issue essentially in our scope of services, other than the rabies management aspect is usually limited to domestic animals. But the code that we were talking about with regards to the provision of food to unauthorized feeding of animals would apply to that. It doesn't say that it has to be a dog or a cat. And that was included specifically for that reason, where we do see people that, very well-intended and compassionate, and really are trying to do the nice thing and help these animals by putting food out. But what we see is that whether it's ground squirrels, or ducks at the pond, or cats behind the grocery store, or whatever it might be, that unregulated feeding just simply draws in more animals and causes that population to increase. And we see both the nuisance issues that you described there, whether it's with the squirrels or cats, increase in disease and illness among the animals, continued over population, and it creates an unsustainable and difficult problem. So that's what that code is there for. It could certainly be applied by city police department, park staff, or anybody that has code enforcement authority within the city, does retain, in the way that the code is structured, the ability to utilize that to address those issues, if you will, as well. And if I might, I'd like to back up just to what Chief Watkins just responded to with regards to the context. She's absolutely right, either one will work. We get calls, both from the police departments that are referred to us, but we also receive calls directly to our office at any time. And I would encourage residents, sometimes actually it's probably better if you call us during, so that the dispatchers can focus on police issues and emergency and public safety issues that are priorities. safety issues that are priorities. We do have, while we don't have somebody answering phones overnight or on holidays and so forth, there is an option for urgent and emergency situations such as loose aggressive animals to be contacted the sheriff's dispatch office. The sheriff's dispatch office has the ability to contact an on-call animal control officer to come out at that time and deal with those as well.
Last two questions. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't do this except for, it's a little nebulous, this whole waiting period and, you know, three to seven to six. If you have three in there, there is an option that you could do three and then that might be too little. So is there any way that we as Morro Bay can state that we would like to have it at least seven? And then also the microchipping. I understand your concern. If people actually did want to have their animals microchipped, that's fine, that's their choice. But if an animal did get, was loose and then got caught and just to chip them just because that's what you want, I'm just not really think that that's a good idea personally. So my question to you, and I don't quite understand this, this is going to be a whole countywide ordinance. Are we allowed to actually put those in there from Morro Bay if my other council people actually decided that?
So I guess going backwards from the microchipping issue. So to be clear, and I guess in a general sense, yes, the code and the way that it's structured in the contract does allow for the city to add additional provisions that aren't part of the county code if you think there's something particularly that you want to address that we haven't included. So for example, some of the estuary bird regulations, it's not in the county because it's not a county issue. Tascadero has a code related to Tascadero Lake and so forth. So you can add things in and additionally, there are things that can be exempted or addressed. So Chief Watkins pointed out to the hearing for revocation or denial of permits, that the council would perform the appeal on that as opposed to the board of supervisors, and that's a carve-out that is included with this. So you would have the ability to exempt the microchips if you chose to do so. To be clear with that, there is California state law. It's not because we want to do it. California state law actually says that any animal that we take possession of and custody of must be microchipped before it is returned to the owner. And that's a California state law that we're required to do. So any animal coming into the shelter, any animal that we adopt out, placed in a new home is always microchipped, of course. And in fact, if an animal is impounded at the shelter, whether it's impounded because it was a custodial impound, the driver was a DUI or something, or if the animal's picked up, it's stray at large, those animals are microchipped now in accordance with state law and that's just something that we're required to do. With regards to the holding period, I want to be really clear that, on a couple of things. The holding period as it's defined in here is what is currently in place and what has been in place for more than 25 years. For at least two decades, Animal Services has maintained a live outcome rate over 90%. And when we talk about, and I don't like to use the term no kill because I think it's a loaded term that really, I think, doesn't convey the totality of the issues that we deal with and is fraught with some problems. But when that term is used and where it's generally defined, one of the problems is it's not easy to define, but the generally accepted definition for it is having a live outcome rate at the shelter of 90% or above. I will never tell you that we are a no kill shelter because I recognize that any euthanasia of the animal ultimately is killing that animal. But the point being, I will tell you that we meet that standard that is applied and we have for decades. And that is our sincere and most driving motivation to make sure that we're getting positive outcomes for those animals. So the, to the holding period, I also want to be really clear, that's just the holding period. That's long, that's not a date, after three days the animal will be euthanized. Our average holding time for dogs, by and large, is 10 and a half days. Cats, it's over 21 days. That's the average time that those animals are there. We have a number of animals that are there for extended periods. We have dogs there right now that have been there for months and months. We have had dogs that have been there for over a year. So it's not simply that we're looking at that three-day cutoff as a time to euthanize the animal, that's just simply the mandated holding period before we can take some other action with that animal. The action that we prefer to take after three days is placing it up for adoption in a new home, placing it with a rescue group. And in fact, we actually extend that holding period out to the five-day window for most animals. The only time that we utilize the 72-hour window really is where the animal is suffering, may have a broken leg and a temperament that we can't really manage and we know that it's not going to be placeable into a new home. So we don't want it to continue to suffer in that situation or where there's, you know, a grave public safety issue or a safety issue for our staff who have to handle and address those animals. So those are very rare circumstances where we actually go to that point.
Forgot to ask one thing. So like my last dog I got in a, she was outside, in a box outside of Carlock's Bakery. And you used to see the kittens, you know, you don't see that anymore. Is there some reason for that?
You know, I think there's a number of different reasons for that. I mean, I guess the easy one, if you're saying she's in a box in front of Carlock's, state code actually doesn't allow people to sell animals at transient locations.
She wasn't sold, it was free.
But if she was abandoned in that sense, yeah. You know, I think that over time, we are seeing better responsibility in animal owners with regards to spanner compliance and preventing unwanted litters. So we're not seeing those litters as much. I will say that we're seeing that more frequently as the economy has turned down, we're having some issues with that encountering at the shelter more. But people are making use of shelters, whether it's Woodsman Society, whether it's us, we receive those animals at the shelter there, bring them in and, you know, depending on how old they are, place them with a foster until they're old enough to adopt out or actually get them into homes. So I think, you know, it's a combination of factors, the increasing responsibility, the availability of shelters and, you know, the work of Good Samaritans identifying those animals, maybe taking them home with yourself or bringing them into shelters.
Okay, thank you.
Just a real quick question, since you mentioned fostering. Three dogs, three cats, whatever is the limit. So I see the advertisements that have been up on social media and the need for fostering because of the puppies and everything. What is the rules for that? Is that?
So, yeah, the limitations on dogs and cats in most communities around this county right now and in the new code would be three dogs and three cats. However, as Chief mentioned, there is a provision within the code that allows for us to issue a variance permit to individuals that have more than three. So that may be the person that has, and the reason for that number is really to minimize the impact of animal nuisances on neighborhoods and people that might have, you know, lots of dogs that cause barking problems or lots of cats running around the neighborhood. But if somebody has four cats inside their house, it's not a problem for anybody else, it really doesn't impact anything. So there are circumstances where it's very reasonable to allow some extension of that and this is another one of those. So somebody that's interested in fostering for us, we will go ahead and foster out to them. If they've only got three, if they've already got three cats, we will issue fosters to them. They just have to get the permit. And for most people, there is a permit fee that's assessed to cover the cost of issuance and inspections with regards to those individuals that are doing this as a public service, that fee is waived though.
Thank you, I was hoping it was. I am not allowed out there, I take too many dogs home.
You're going to have to come by.
Factual. All my animals have been adopted from out there.
Thank you. Two questions. What are the fees for somebody to reclaim their pet?
So this is, I'm not going to be able to give you a straight answer on this because like many things that we do, it's pretty complex. There are a number of fees that factor into that. Some of them are defined locally by our fee structure and local codes, others are defined by the state. So really it's going to depend on if this is the first time your animal is impounded. It's usually, there is a discounted rate or a cheaper rate if it is the first impound for your animal. That goes up sequentially, the more times your animal is impounded, the more expensive it gets. It depends on if your dog is licensed. If your dog is licensed, the first time's free. It depends on if your dog is spayed or neutered. There's a state fee that is a fine assessed on animals that are unaltered, running at large. Depends on how long the animal remains at the shelter before you come and get it. There's a boarding fee that's assessed per day that the animal is there. So there's a number of different things that factor into that. And so it may be free for your licensed dog that you come get that same afternoon. It may be several hundred dollars if your dog has been running at large and this is the fifth time that we've picked it up this year and it's unaltered and you've not licensed it.
Thank you. And so it sounds like a lot of, a lot of your policy is driven from state law, by state policy.
Yeah, I actually have the Animal Laws Handbook with me just to reference if there's anything that comes up. It's a book about that thick of statewide codes that relate to the animals generally, whether it has to do with animals in the back of a pickup truck or how long we have to hold them or whatever it may be. So state establishes a large number of codes related to animals and drives a lot of what we do in standards. There is, within the county Title IX, these are all more local or municipal type of ordinances that aren't addressed at the state level. As you mentioned, the state, there's something that I'd like to bring up too with regards to that. And I'll point out that the state actually has adopted within the state code a policy of the state legislature that says that it's the policy of the state of California that no adoptable or treatable manageable animal should be euthanized where, and that all efforts should be made to try and recover those animals and receive positive outcomes for them. I'm not quoting it directly, but that's essentially the effect. So that is the policy of the state of California and one that we operate under because of that and one that we work very stringently to try and abide by.
Thank you. A follow-up thought with regard to the fees to reclaim your pet. Are there any adjustments made for low-income folks, any accommodations?
Yeah, the code does allow for, does extend authority to me to either reduce or waive fees if it appears to be in the interest of animal welfare or to the extent that there is an undue financial hardship. So, you know, we do wind up having situations where individuals may be challenged to meet some of those fees. We do set up payment agreements for those individuals and we certainly have folks, particularly in our very low-income or unhoused community that just, payment agreement or not, they don't have the money to get their animal out. And in those situations, provided that we're not seeing that coupled with some other neglect or abuse issue to where it really would be a concern for the welfare of the animal to return to the owner, you know, they wind up going back to that individual. And I'll point out that in those cases with, back to the microchip, we are required to microchip that animal as well. That code does specifically state that if the individual's unable to afford it, that that'll be performed at no fee.
All right, last question. We've had a lot of correspondence regarding this issue. I think a lot of the issues have been taken care of because it's state mandated, but the one is the holding period and I'm not sure who, whom to address this question to. But how would we go about adopting the county ordinance but insisting upon a seven-day holding period? Would that be possible for us to do if we voted tonight?
So I'll go back to the state and just mention that the state holding period is also seven, or 72 hours, it's three days. The answer to your question, I don't know if I can answer it directly, I'm not sure, I'm not an attorney, so I might refer to Mr. Schultz, but I'll tell you my perspective on it, I think, is that with regards to Title IX, there's a number of things that are in here which relate to the behavior and activities of animal owners and their obligations and responsibilities. Leash law, barking noise, nuisances, not allowed to leave animals in unsanitary conditions, things like that. And if you chose not to have one of those in there or you wanted to add something else that related to that, that would certainly be something that, you know, I think would be easy to add in. There are portions of the state code and then within the county code that speak directly to the operational management of Animal Services and the facility that we have on county property. So I'm going to step out of my bounds a little bit and Mr. Schultz can probably correct me to this extent, but I think what I'll say, and I don't mean this with any disrespect, but that the provisions in the Morro Bay city code apply within the jurisdiction of Morro Bay. I don't know that a city code could obligate a county to perform a specific function or abide by a certain specific regulation. That's really what our contract does. Our contract spells out what the city's expectations and requirements are for our relationship. That's on sort of that level of things. I'll tell you pragmatically as well, if this were to be changed, I don't know that, it would be very difficult for us to actually even do this because as I mentioned, most owner reclaims that we get for dogs are coming in at around two days, a little bit less and just over for cats. I don't know that it is going to benefit the reclaim rate substantially. Most of the animals that we get that aren't reclaimed are moved into the process of animal adoption or redemption or transferred to a rescue group. If an owner comes forward at some point after the animal has been placed into adoption, provided that there's some reasonable explanation why they didn't come forward, "I was on vacation" or something like that, right? We don't have, I'll be honest, we don't have the ability to obligate the adopter legally to return the animal, but we will reach out to those individuals and provide information regarding those extenuating circumstances and try to negotiate or encourage or ask that they consider the return of the animal to the original family where that seems to have been something reasonable. If we have somebody that comes forward after the dog's been there, you know, two weeks, they never came for it because they were, you know, too busy or whatever, that changes it a little bit. But with that regard, I don't know that operationally it would be something that we would be able to manage those extended holding periods specifically. And it does put the situation where if we have a dog that comes in that is highly aggressive, it's a stray dog that we picked up running down the road, it has no identified owner, it may have, you know, threatened some people or attempted to bite people and it's one that demonstrates behavior that we know, we can't put safely back out into the community. An extended holding period may require us to hold that animal for longer than we have to, at the same time that our shelter is currently and has been for some time, running at a full occupancy rate. And I understand the sensitivity of this and I do understand and share the concern about these holding times. And I'll admit, 72 hours sounds like not very long, but I want to keep going back to how long we do keep animals for because of the reality, those animals that are adoptable, that are placeable and treatable stay for a long time. But because we operate at such a thin margin on our space, if we take this highly aggressive dog that's threatening the public and have to hold that for another week, that reduces the amount of space that we can dedicate to those animals that are adoptable and treatable and it reduces our available shelter space. So to accommodate that, the pressure then becomes to either expand out the space that we have with additional construction or to reduce the number of animals that we have in the shelter and that means shortening the stay period for those animals that may otherwise be able to be placeable. And to the extent that we don't have somebody coming in for them, the very unfortunate truth for those animals would be, holding this aggressive dog would place adoptable animals, treatable animals at potential risk for euthanasia. And that's not what we want to get to.
And if I could just add, the purpose and certainly the city obligations under the contract is that conformity, right? And so you might lose an animal in Morro Bay, but it ends up being picked up out in the county, right? And so at what point, and that's the purpose for that conformity, is so that the animal control or the Animal Services, they're not playing that guessing game, okay, well, we picked up the animal in Cayucus, but is it a Morro Bay animal? Is it a San Luis Obispo animal? So it's just, that conformity is so important, which is one of the reasons why we're bringing these two, you know, municipal codes together is to make it a smoother, more, you know, standardized process. And so it's just, when you're dealing with animals, you know, you don't know. And unless they're, you know, microchipped and tagged and things like that, we could very easily, dogs get loose from Dog Beach all the time. So does the dog get loose in the county and then end up in Morro Bay and now it's granted that extended time? Does the dog get loose in Morro Bay and end up out at a county pocket, right? So it's the conformity and the contract that we're under, that's the important part of this is that we're all playing, you know, fairly similar to those regulations and expectations.
I think we're good on questions right now. I'm gonna, this is a public hearing item. I have one speaker slip to start with. We have three minutes. And first up is Valerie Lovett. Hopefully I don't say it wrong, I probably did, I'm doing that a lot. Hopefully I don't say it wrong, I probably did, I'm doing that a lot tonight. And after that, public comment is open on this item, so please be ready to come up.
I think a number of the things that were discussed by the chief and Animal Reg, answers some of Ann Calhoun's questions, not Ann Calhoun, and Betty Winholt's questions. But, good evening, city council and mayor, my name is Valerie Levillit. I'm a 34 resident, 34-year-old, 34 resident, 34-year resident of Morro Bay. Betty Winholt is unable to attend tonight's council meeting, therefore, I'm here to read Betty's letter, which was sent to the council, I think you have a copy of that, regarding the proposed regulations developed by Slow County Animal Services. And I think some of the things that Betty's concerned about, they were discussed by the chief and by Dr. Anderson. And besides asking that the holding, dear city council, besides asking that the holding period for domestic animals be seven days across the board, rather than three days, in section 9.04.002 and section 9.04.006, please expand the euthanasia section to read as follows. And I think in your letter, it's highlighted in blue text, the changes that she would like to see. 9.04.010, euthanasia of animals, Part A, before, any impounded animal which upon conclusion of its holding period has not been redeemed by its owner, should be put up for adoption. To enhance adoptability, medical care, and behavior training may be employed. If overcrowding occurs, fostering and utilizing nonprofit animal rescue organizations should be employed. Only as a last resort, may the impounded animal be humanely euthanized in the manner recommended by the American Veterinary Medical Association, specifically the use of veterinarian prescribed sedatives and FDA-approved euthanasia solutions. Part B, before any owner surrendered animal which has not been reclaimed by its owner within a period of time equivalent to the holding period for impounded stray animals, as set forth in section 9.04.006, again, should be put up for adoption. To enhance adoptability, medical care, and behavior training may be employed. If overcrowding occurs, fostering and contacting nonprofit animal rescue organizations should be employed. Only as a last resort, may the animal, may the impounded animal be humanely euthanized in the manner recommended by the American Veterinary Medical Association, specifically the use of veterinarian, is that three? Veterinarian prescribed sedatives and FDA-approved euthanasia solutions.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie.
Staff members and councilmen, I'm reading a letter for Nicole Dorfman, who was unable to attend this evening. Her letter states, "I oppose any new regulations to vaccinating cats for rabies, as research shows it is unnecessary and potentially harmful. In accordance to CDC, there are fewer than 10 cases of human rabbits per rabies per year in U.S. The CDC also reports that wild animals, such as bats, raccoons, and skunks, account for over 90% of reported rabies cases each year. Interestingly, cats' dogs are not even mentioned on the CDC's rabies list. According to the National Rabies Surveillance System, feline rabies are extremely rare. Second of all, vaccinating cats for rabies is unnecessary to protect human health and should not be required, as with all medical treatments. There is a risk of harm, allergic reaction among cats, and are well documented, including anaphylaxis." Second of all, opposing mandatory microchipping of dogs and cats. Dogs are already required to wear collars and IDs, so microchipping is redundant and unnecessary. Many people choose to microchip their pets. It should never be mandated or mandatory, as practice does nothing to better the health of the animal, their owners, or the public at large. Like the rabies shots in cats, microchipping also comes with risks that this time of, this type of malignant tumors. In 2007, a report titled "Microchip-Induced Tumors in Laboratory Rodents and Dogs" reviewed the literature of 1990 to 2006 states, and I quote, "In at least six studies published in Toxicology and Pathology Journal between 1996 and 2006, researchers found a cause link between implanted microchips, transponders, and cancer in laboratory mice and rats. In almost all cases, the tumors arose in the site of the implants and grew to surround and fully encase the devices. In several cases, the tumors also metastasize or spread to other parts of the animals, including lungs, liver, stomach, pancreas, heart, and spleen. In addition to those six studies, two other specifically evaluated cancerous tumors that develop in dogs at the site of microchipping implants. In one case, the tumor was attached to the implant. In other cases, the tumor completely encased the microchip." That is a statement from Nicole Dorfman. Thank you.
Good to see y'all. My name is Dan Sedley, I live in Morro Bay, and I love cats and dogs. I am a former volunteer at the animal shelter, and so I am familiar with a bit of their operation. I'm not an expert like this gentleman. I don't pretend to be an expert about too many things. One of the biggest issues I have is this three-day waiting period. People have lives, they have events scheduled, they have vacations, they have business trips, they travel virtually, they travel all over the world, and so they can't be gotten a hold of. So, three days has come and gone, so we're giving your fido or your kitty to somebody else, because we couldn't reach you, because you have a life. In my view, that doesn't really work. It's insensitive, it's uncaring, it's just property that we're going to deal with, like we deal with towing away your car, we're going to tow away your dog, we're going to tow away your cat. That doesn't work for me, sorry, it just doesn't. The city wants to say this will lead to increased euthanasia, it will overpopulate the shelter. I have some answers for that. Let's talk about some preventive answers, instead of just killing or building new buildings. Let's talk about an ordinance to require that animals be fixed. Unless you're a breeder, a licensed breeder by whomever is designated, the city, or the county, or the state, unless you're licensed, you're required to fix your cat or dog. That's reasonable prevention that will stop these litters of just going haywire and procreating beyond what the shelter can hold. Another plan is requiring our rescues to only utilize the shelter unless all adoptable animals have been taken. Now, I'm familiar that Woods Humane Society, which is right next door to the shelter, gets a lot of their animals from the shelter, and I applaud them, but so many of them don't get even one from our own shelter. And so I propose an ordinance that would require them to, unless the shelter says we have no adoptable animals here. Those two things right there would clear up the explosion, our animal explosion, boom, they wouldn't be able to fill their shelter, even during kitten season. Thank you, council.
I want to say, I know for sure all five of our council members are animal lovers, as am I. I love working on them. And I hear now that we have a state law, which I looked up while I was sitting there, and it's very interesting to me, that Senator Ling Ling Chang did Senate Bill 573 at the beginning of 2020. We all know what happened, and that was when they passed the microchipping law. Now, I don't know, I couldn't find out if this is still enacted, Senate Bill 573, an exemption for animals to be microchipped with medical conditions. But it's probably as hard to prove that for an animal as it is for a human, but then how can you say that every animal has to be microchipped before they leave? They might have a medical exemption. I'm just really, really, really frustrated to hear that there are laws like that, because I hope that all of you can take the time to read that scientific report that Nicole attached about all what happens from vaccines and microchipping to animals, because it's not a little deal that they're requiring this for our pets. I mean, at least humans, after a certain age, can make up their minds, but animals never have that choice. We're like, we don't want to euthanize them, but yet we're giving them a slow euthanization by requiring microchipping and vaccines, and yes, that's my opinion. So I want to tell you a couple, one story I just heard last week, my friend's dog. She got the chip and she was always looking at it, and every time she got in front of her router, the dog would have like this, because just like humans, humans, some are more sensitive to EMFs than others, and dogs are too. So if you ever notice your dog looking at their chip, don't let them get by your cellphone and your router, that's a little information for you. And I wanted to say, I think there should be a law that says, if you're going to make them get vaccinated, then you need to give them a dosage. A three-pound teacup poodle should not get the same amount of vaccine as a Great Dane, but they do. And like my friend's dog, the dog was older, went to the pound, they gave her all of the vaccines that she hadn't had for a while, and guess what? She died two days later. Because you can't give a baby or an animal all their not-taking vaccines all at once and think it's not going to have an effect. Just like cat leukemia has increased dramatically, and they know one of the reasons is vaccines. Anyway, let's see, what else did I, I just, I just thank you for all the information you've given us.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
Madam Mayor, there are no raised hands.
Thank you. With that, I will bring it back to council and close this public hearing item. Thank you. Thank you for all the comments. Chief, I have a question, please. Enforcement of microchipping, I mean, what, are you going to go around and check and see if dogs are microchipped or cats are microchipped? What's the deal?
Thank you for that question, I appreciate that. The answer is no. We are not checking for vaccination records, we are not checking for microchipping. As I stated previously, this is if your animal happens to become loose and impounded by animal services, that is when that information is going to be checked for returning the animal, and then making sure that the animal is not sick and doesn't need vaccinations to keep the other animals in the shelter healthy. So, simple answer, no. I am not going door-to-door, our officers, if we come across an animal, we're not, and we find the owner, we're not going to ask for vaccination records, we're not going to ask for microchipping records. We want to get the animal back. It is simply going to be kind of the, if your dog ends up in animal services, that's when those checks are going to be made. It is not an active or proactive approach.
Thank you. And I think to someone's comment too, about the timeline regarding if you're out of town or somewhere, I know cats are on self-feeders, but I know when I go out of town, I have somebody pet-city my animal, and, you know, we don't all have home lines, I think very few of us do anymore, so most all of us have cellphones with data on them, so you are going to get notified, but I know when I leave, you know, I always have somebody watching my dog, so if my dog were to get out, and my dog is chipped, although I've never changed the chip to me, so they're going to call somebody down in LA, but I keep a collar on them too. I think we all want to do those things. And again, you know, I, five of the last 10 dogs I've had, I adopted from out there, and two of them were from, one was from a hoarder, so I know the impact that it has, and the choices they have to make are not easy, because it was a criminal case, they couldn't even adopt them at the time, and that impacts all those other dogs. And the other one was from a pet store seizure, that they had abandoned them to the most loving dogs I ever had. But I understand what that does to that timeline mandating that. I would hope that we're all on the same page in wanting to rehome these animals and put them back in the homes they belong in. The cat rabies, so if I take my animal to the vet, are they going to require me to get the rabies for my cat, or are they going to require me to chip my cat or dog if I take them for their annual checkup?
No, I don't believe so. That is something that is at the owner's decision. I've owned many animals, and the chipping is always an option, and certainly vaccinations are always an option.
Yeah, to that point, the veterinarian has no enforcement authority, they're simply a private medical provider for you. They can't make you do it, and going back, there's nothing that we're going to do going out and, you know, double-checking that your dog's microchipped or any of those sorts of things. They will probably educate animal owners that their dog should be microchipped, their cat should be microchipped, if it's outside, it should be rabies vaccinated, but that's simply a discussion they should already be having right now with their clients about responsible pet ownership practices, but no, they won't make you do it.
And can you, so the only vaccine, if my animal is impounded and you've determined it hasn't had, is a rabies, that's all you would do, and...
No, actually, so, standard practice and recommended practice, animals coming into the shelter, because we do not know their vaccination history, and are they carrying or could they be susceptible to parvo, panleukopenia, and these diseases, which if they're introduced and perpetuate in the shelter, could potentially result in fatal infections for the entire populations. We do prophylactic vaccinations for those very core vaccinations, or those core illnesses on intake. And then, if an animal is adopted out through animal services, it does get a rabies vaccination at that time. If your dog is, or your cat is impounded and you come to redeem it, it wouldn't necessarily be rabies vaccinated, that would be something that could be provided if you decided to do that. But again, honestly, we don't know if your cat's indoors or outdoors usually.
And so then, since you talked about the parvo, if the dog comes in on an intake and is sick, you are mandatory to hold that dog then for the three days, or because it's sick, so you can put it down?
Yeah, state and other laws allow, in the instance that an impounded animal has a medical condition, which is, the word that the state uses, irremediably suffering, which basically means that we can't reasonably treat the animal and keep it comfortable until an owner comes to reclaim it, or that it's something that the average pet owner wouldn't be treating, that it can be euthanized at that time. We treat a number of the dogs that come in with parvo, and we have the ability to put them in isolation, and provided that it's a relatively mild case, we will treat them, try to recover them through that and get them up for adoption. If they come in and it seems like their prognosis is very, very poor, and that effort would simply prolong that suffering, then yes, that animal will be euthanized, simply for humane concerns, so that it doesn't go through a protective illness. But we're actually tending to see with parvo, actually, the symptomology and the severity of those cases is significantly less than what it used to be. And so, within the past year, I don't know the exact number, but there's probably half a dozen dogs that we've treated with parvo at the shelter, and subsequently placed up for adoption and gotten into new homes.
Thank you, thank you for that information. And I feel like San Luis County does a good job. I'm on Facebook, I support other shelters, you know, Mead Canine Rescue and others that take into life and senior dogs, and I see what's going on over in the valley, and I feel fortunate for the service level we have here, because Fresno, Bakersfield, and those areas are, it's bad.
And Mead is one of our rescue... And Mead is one of our rescue partners that we work with.
Yeah. Thank you for that. To my left, comments?
My comment is, before making a motion at some point soon, is that I'm disappointed, as one of our public speakers mentioned, about the constraints that we face due to the preponderance of state laws and the actions that we can take at the county or city level. But I think there is something that we can do with the holding period. Sometimes it just takes one person to stand up and say something, in this case, maybe one city out of seven, to set a higher standard. I know I received correspondence and input from folks outside of our city that were very supportive of the seven-day period. So when the time's appropriate, if I have the opportunity, I'll present a motion with that seven day and then see what happens.
I just want to say how much I appreciate you being here. Dr. Anderson and Chief Watkins appreciate your very thorough reports, both of you, and taking the correspondence from our public to heart and seriously. I also, I took solace in hearing that you have a 90%, live outcome. You know, it was good to hear that. It was also good to hear that there's no confiscation of pets. That also is good to know. And, you know, although I am still somewhat confused on the microchipping and the tagging, because if your dog or cat has a collar on it with tags, I mean, obviously, that is a form of identification, but those can get lost. I'm thinking we don't have a wand to test for microchipping here, do we, Chief Watkins?
We do not, but that's when we would enlist the assistance of Animal Services. We can actually take it to the shelter as well and get it 24 hours a day and get that identification.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. That's, I'm good.
I just think it, it sounds like it's, you're required to chip a pet no matter what once you receive them.
Yes, ma'am.
So it sounds like people don't have to do it until you receive them, and then they have to do it.
This puts the requirement on the front end, so hopefully that the animal is chipped when we get it, and we can never bring it into the shelter or get it home. And as you mentioned, the collars sometimes come off. We have a number of people that go for a walk with their dog, and it turns around and pulls its neck right out of the collar, and they're left with ID tag in their hand, and a missing animal. Animals are stolen. It helps us reunite stolen animals with their owners and so forth. There's a lot of value to it in that respect. But no, if somebody does not comply with the requirement, the only time that we're going to know or take any action on it is if it comes into our possession at the shelter, at which point we would wind up microchipping it anyway, and the situation would be closed.
Yeah. And you wouldn't know if they have a pre-existing medical condition that they might need a note for. So it's just unfortunate. I realize that you're in that situation. It's unfortunate that's a state mandate, because, you know, you start with the pets and we're next.
To that, that I, medical issue, there is an allowance for animals with medical issues that, in the code, that would exempt them from a requirement. If the animal had an ID tag with its name and its owner on it and came in with that, that we would be able then to look at our records, and it would show, in fact, at that time, that there was a medical exemption on that animal, so it wouldn't be microchipped.
Okay. And Councilmember Echols, I will support your motion. I just think of like someone that maybe went to the hospital and had to leave their pet home alone, and, you know, they don't, it seems like they should have some note. Well, I mean, if they have an emergency and they have to be taken to the hospital, you don't know what could happen. I don't know.
So if I may, just to that point, if medical emergencies are going to be captured through 911, CAD, things like that, and that's something that our officers do an excellent job with. And it's not just for animals, it's for people, too, because we get a lot of calls about missing people. And what we do is we do neighborhood canvas. We do, typically, even if somebody goes maybe by a private vehicle, we're going to knock on doors and make sure that we do a proper investigation to figure out what's happened to that owner. So it's very rare that we just don't know. And now we're managing an animal or for somebody that's in a hospital. Those are the first things you check, right? If you're missing a loved one, it's hospitals and jails, right? And it's similar in what we do for animals as well. So that's something that we take on and make sure that we're not just kind of locking the door and walking away. We're checking with neighbors, and especially here in Morro Bay, neighbors know what's happening.
If I might speak to that same point. We routinely get phone calls from hospitals, medical facilities, saying, I have a patient here, and we believe their animal is in your care. And we coordinate with the hospitals, the social workers there, to get resolution of that. Those animals that belong to those individuals, people that are arrested, maybe on a mental health hold, fall into this custodial impound category. And I will say that that group of animals is subject to a different holding period because of the laws around that intake on a state level. The holding period for those animals that belong to that person that was hospitalized, and we brought in their animal association with it, or placed in jail or mental health, holding period for those animals is 14 days from the date of notification that the animal is there. So that person in the hospital, we would hold that animal for 14 days while we're working either for them to come get it or next of kin and so forth. So those are a relatively small portion of the animals that we get in, but there is an avenue that addresses this.
Thank you.
You ready? All right. I move that we introduce by title only with further reading waived, ordinance number 669, entitled, In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay, California repealing and replacing Title VII animals of the Morro Bay Municipal Code to Adopt and Incorporate by Reference, San Luis Obispo County Code Title IX animals, and to retain certain city requirements regarding animals and finding the action not subject to sequo with the modification of Section 9.04.002 and 9.04.006 to establish a holding period for a minimum of seven days and to include any other references to euthanasia to have a minimum of seven days for a holding period.
I'll second that.
Hey, Mayor, may I address that issue?
Yes.
Unfortunately, Chapter IX is a county code, so we do not have the ability to amend the county code. It'd be the same if there was a state law that you didn't like, that you were talking about amending that state law here. So we can't amend it. We can ask the county to amend their code. We could potentially put in our own code that even though there's a three-day, we are requesting or demanding that the county do seven days. But we don't have the ability to change their code here tonight. We're adopting their code because of our contract. So, sorry to bring that news into it, but it's not our code to change, it's the county code.
You rained on our parade.
I know. There is, I mean, like, I think it was mentioned, you can certainly add other things that aren't in conflict with that code. But if it's in direct conflict with it, then we don't have the ability to amend.
So I'll withdraw my motion. Did we get a second?
Withdraw your motion or withdraw the amendment to your motion?
Well, yes. So thank you. I'll withdraw the amendment and stick to the original motion. But I'll also ask council, then, how would we achieve what we're desirous of achieving with that prior stated motion?
Lobby the county to change it from three to seven, or to put in our ordinance language that does state that we know that there is three days, but we're requiring seven days within our city. It might not be enforceable, but it would certainly, at least from that end, show that we've tried, from a standpoint of what you've heard from the community, requesting that seven more days. So.
Thank you. And that's what I'm trying to achieve. Even if it's potentially unenforceable, the goal of my motion is for the City of Morro Bay to step forward as the first city to say, this is what we want for seven days, with the hopes that other jurisdictions within the county would follow.
We can, we can work on that language. We'd have to bring it back for first reading, because it is a change to it. So it would come back again for first reading, but we could add that section in there.
Okay, thank you. All right. So then my motion stands without the amendment?
No, you want it, you want it, you want your motion to stand, but instead that it'll come back for first reading with that change that you've recommended?
Yes.
So it'd come back in two weeks. We'll just add one section within our ordinance that hopefully meets that requirement, and then it can be approved at first reading next time.
Perfect. Yes. So there we go.
And you accept that?
I accept that.
Yeah, thank you.
And it'll be continued to a date certain, which would be your next meeting, which would be which date? April 22nd.
And will be continued to date certain, April 22nd, 2025.
It's a public hearing. Thank you. And with that, we'll do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Thank you again, Dr. Anderson, for coming. Thank you, Chief Watkins. We're going to move on to do one more real quick public hearing here, and then we'll take a break after that. Public hearing on vacancies to comply with Assembly Bill 2561. And we're turning this over to our Human Resource Manager.
Are you still in the way?
I think so. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Morro Bay residents. I'm Rachel Hendricks, Human Resources and Risk Manager. Tonight, I'll be presenting the City of Morro Bay's 2025 AB 2561 report in compliance with new state transparency requirements around job vacancies. Okay. What is AB 2561? AB 2561 went into effect on January 1st, 2025, and added a new code section to the Myers-Millius-Brown Act. The Myers-Millius-Brown Act governs collective bargaining between local government employees and their employers, ensuring the rights of public employees to unionize and negotiate on wages, hours, and working conditions. AB 2561 recognized that vacancies are a widespread problem in the public sector statewide. High public sector vacancies rates are believed to contribute to increased workloads, mandatory overtime, employee burnout, and decreased employee retention, which can negatively impact service delivery to citizens and communities. And this new government code section imposes new obligations on public sector agencies to track and present information on those job vacancies. So the city's responsibility under this new law is to present vacancy, recruitment, and retention information during a public hearing before budget adoption. If any bargaining group's vacancy rate hits 20%, then we must provide more comprehensive analysis than what you'll see tonight. Fortunately, we're well below that threshold. The public hearing purpose tonight is to increase transparency and provide a public forum for discussing our staffing levels, especially regarding keeping positions filled, maintaining workforce stability, and ensuring city service continuity. Continuing with the purpose, this annual public hearing also gives our represented bargaining groups a public voice in the process before the budget is adopted. The city has three recognized bargaining groups: SEIU, which is the Service Employees International Union, the Police Officers Association, and the Firefighters Association. They have all been provided an invitation to present during this public hearing. Now, I will give you a brief overview of the city's workforce. As of April 1st, we have 114.5 full-time equivalent positions. We have five full-time positions that are currently vacant, which brings our overall vacancy rate to just 4%. None of our employee groups are at the 20% threshold for increased reporting. And this is the slide. This visual provides a group-by-group breakdown of vacancy rates in our city. It shows that we're maintaining good staffing levels across all of our groups. In management, we have two current vacancies, the planning manager and the finance manager. However, an offer has been extended to a finance manager candidate, so that'll soon Police positions are the hardest for us to fill. This is not a reflection on our police department, but across California, filling police officer positions has been increasingly difficult. Police agencies are competing for a shrinking pool of candidates as fewer people are entering law enforcement careers, and those that do often have many job options, making it hard for smaller cities like ours to compete. Locally, and I just did an internet search today, there are current open recruitments for police officers in the cities of Arroyo Grande, Atascadero, Paso Robles, Pismo Beach, and San Luis Obispo, in addition to our city. In SEIU, there's only one vacancy, and that position is a lead utility operator, which we're currently working on reclassifying to better suit the needs of the utilities But as you can see from the chart, our vacancy rates are quite low. Just going to do a plug for our current full-time recruitments. Currently, we're recruiting for three full-time roles, so the city engineer, a police officer, and police sergeant. And I want to point out that as soon as we receive a resignation notice from an employee, we start to recruit quickly, sometimes before the incumbent employee has departed the city in the effort to reduce the length of time the position is vacant. This slide recaps our 2024 recruitment activity. We had 20 full-time recruitments and 111 part-time employees that we welcomed to the city. We reviewed over 635 full-time applications for those 20 full-time positions. Despite the appearance of a high number of applicants, we continue to face challenges. Many applicants for our full-time positions are either not qualified or applying from other countries and states without a true intention to relocate. Sometimes candidates also drop out of the recruitment process due to the high cost of living in our area, lack of fully remote work, and their own salary expectations. Our 2024 departure reasons, this chart shows that we had 12 full-time employees depart, city employment, in 2024. The leading reasons were for better pay, promotional opportunities elsewhere, and then we had, you know, some that left for retirement, private sector, or personal reasons like childcare. This chart tracks our full-time turnover rate for the last five years. It helps us assess long-term patterns and informs how we adjust our workforce strategies. While generally, a turnover rate of 10% or lower is considered good, our turnover rates have been high at the city, as well as many other cities in our county and other industries in recent years, due in part to the great resignation or the great reshuffle that occurred starting in 2022 with COVID. So you'll see that we are decreasing, and our chart actually looks very similar to other charts. Some of our retention efforts to retain our employees and lower our turnover rates. To support retention, the city's implemented wage adjustments from our 2023 compensation study last year. We signed new labor agreements with market wage and benefits increases, and we added longevity incentives, expanded training and employee development, and allowed flexible schedules where possible. We also continue to focus on strong and open communication with our bargaining units and our employees in general, and continuing offering competitive employee benefits, including dental, vision, and life insurance. We also have annual recognition programs like service pins and employee appreciation events as part of our strategy to boost morale and This presentation and hearing fulfills- This presentation and hearing fulfill the requirements of AB 2561. All bargaining groups remain below the 20% vacancy threshold, and our current vacancy rate is a healthy 4%. No council action is needed today. While we invited each of our three bargaining groups here tonight, only SEIU has opted to speak tonight. At this time, we invite Nicole Bryant, Field Representative with SEIU Local 620, to speak.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and distinguished council members. I will be quick. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name's Nicole Bryant. I serve as the local field representative for SEIU Local 620, and it's my privilege to represent the largest bargaining unit of dedicated employees across nearly every department within the City of Morro Bay. SEIU Local 620 is a member-run organization, and we collectively represent over 3,000 employees at 31 public sector agencies within San Luis Obispo and Santa Barbara Counties, spanning from San Miguel in the north to Carpinteria in the south. As this is the inaugural vacancy hearing following the passage of Assembly Bill 2561, I'm here today to acknowledge and commend the city for its steadfast commitment to public sector employment and its ongoing efforts to maintain low vacancy rates, both within our bargaining unit and across the city as a whole. Public sector workers are the foundation of our communities, performing essential work our neighbors rely on every single day. To provide some context, Assembly Bill 2561 seeks to address growing concerns surrounding longstanding vacant positions in the public sector within our state. Such vacancies can result in diminished services to the community, increased workloads for incumbent staff, difficulty in maintaining operational efficiency, and a rising tendency to contract out public sector work. When labor is contracted out, public oversight, transparency, and accountability diminish, and profits are drawn from taxpayer dollars. However, it is clear that this city, under your leadership, has exceeded the goals set by this bill and has followed, has not followed the statewide trend seen in recent years. As you previously heard from Rachel, as of April 1st, our bargaining unit boasts a vacancy rate of just 2%, which equates to a single position out of our unit of 57, of which is the leadership role acquiring advanced certification in water and wastewater treatment and distribution, ideal for internal promotion. Through proactive policies, fair labor practices, successful collective bargaining, and a shared commitment to the mission to build and maintain stable workforce, your human resources and administration team continue to work collaboratively with their labor partners to meet the needs of the job market. It's no small feat to maintain low vacancy rates, especially in today's economic climate, where recruitment and retention are ongoing challenges due to inflation, high cost of living, and the pressures of PEP rappation reforms, which make it very easy for talented employees to be lured away from one public agency to another. Yet, the city has invested in its workers through competitive wages, strong benefits, and fostering an environment that values long-term employment and dedication to serve the citizens of Morro Bay. SEIU has developed a strong collaborative relationship with the city's human resources team grounded in mutual respect and a shared commitment to the well-being of our employees and the community. Through open communication and ongoing dialogue, we work together to address challenges proactively, streamline processes, and ensure that the needs of our workforce are met while supporting the city's objectives and goals. In closing, I want to express my deep appreciation to the city council, the city administration team, and all of our public sector employees for your ongoing support and commitment to maintaining a strong and healthy workforce. Your efforts to keep vacancy rates low not only align with the objectives of 2561, but also serve as a shining example of what is possible when a community works together towards a common goal of public sector, public service excellence. Thank you for your time, your commitment, and your leadership. We look forward to continuing to work alongside you to strengthen our community, our workforce, and the vital services provided here at the City of Morro Bay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the public hearing. If you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Rachel. Questions? Questions?
A brief, brief one, actually, two brief ones. First, an easy one. Do you know approximately what percentage of the employee force in Morro Bay is covered by collective bargaining unit? I know that management is not covered, but I'm wondering how many of our employees that are eligible to be in a union are in a union?
I believe it's 78 of our 115 employees.
Okay. Great, thank you. Yeah, I knew it was a large number. And then, could you expound just a little bit, Rachel, please, on the longevity incentives? And then if there's any other ideas that you have in your position that are creative in terms of attracting talent to our city or keeping our folks here?
So I'll address the longevity incentives first. So last year, we included some for the police department that included extra incentive pay, and that was new to the Police Officers Association, because actually, our tenure for the police department was actually fairly low. We also included some for our fire department, but those were on the higher scale because our firefighters have been at the fire department much longer. For our SEIU management department heads and confidential employees, we included a longevity incentive that is, I believe, $25 a year for each year after 10 years put into their deferred compensation plan. So a small amount, but most of our employees, I believe, were at a tenure around, between, around four years. So after COVID and after we've had a lot of shift, our tenure is low, so we need some incentives for our folks to stay and want to grow here with the City of Morro Bay. And then as far as creative ideas, you know, what I'm seeing with recruiting is, you know, flexible schedules if we can give them. We have a lot of people that are wanting remote work 50%, not employees here at the city, but when job seekers are looking for, you know, 50% to 100% remote work. So that's something that, you know, we may need to look at at some point. We do have the 980 flex schedule, so city employees that are in positions that can accommodate that have every other Friday off as they work an extended workday. And that is also, that's common in local government, but it's something that, it helps draw people to work here.
Thank you. This is a public hearing item. Public comment is open. Come on up. It's getting late. We have two more items. If we make it.
Hello, council. I appreciate the packet that we received on the pay schedules, including scheduled pay raises, et cetera, et cetera, through the various bargaining years. One thing that I didn't see that I would have liked to have seen was comparative, comparative pay schedules for Morro Bay against the rest of the cities in the county. I would have liked to have seen what a police officer makes in Morro Bay versus what one makes in, say, Paso Robles, but I mean all of them, to see that we are competitive enough to hire and retain the best. Because absolutely, in training all employees, time is money. You see, you spend, you spend all this money training these people, and then they leave to go to a higher pay. In the end, you've really lost money doing that versus paying them a competitive wage so that they do stay, and all the other things that have been talked about. But primarily, their wage is what brings them in, primarily. I've been in the business. So that's what I would like to see, to make informed decisions, to see how we rate in comparison to the rest of the counties, the cities in the county. That's all that I have.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
Madam Mayor, we do have one raised hands. One moment, please. I've given you the permission on mutual microphone. You are able to speak.
Can you hear me okay? Hello? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good afternoon, or I'm sorry, good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. I'm actually, I actually want to take a different approach here with this particular topic. I'm not 100% sure that the way that this was, that this was communicated is necessarily centered, and I want to bring, I just want to talk a little bit openly here for just a second. So 115 FTEs is a big number, and I, you know, I'm apologetic here for what I'm going to say, but Morro Bay is the value of working in Morro Bay. That should be, you know, that in itself should be good enough. Remote work 50% to 100% of the time, that's crazy. I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit reluctant, and, you know, I'm not really sure why all the conversation with raising wages, and wages are not the only thing that bring in value to the community and to the organization. So, you know, 115 FTEs, I'm running a budget currently of $15 billion, and I have less than 115 FTEs. And I think there's a level here that I would also say, you know, the amount of turnover that we don't have, I don't know that that's necessarily a great thing, because we also have degrading infrastructure that those 115 FTEs are responsible for fixing, essentially. So, you know, there's been a lot of talk in this meeting about the amount of dollars that need to be thrown at problems. I don't necessarily agree with that, and, you know, I would just challenge here that if we get into that predicament where we continue to talk about throwing money at a problem, I don't know that that's going to serve us any good. So, you know, I just want to balance the message here that, you know, I think Morro Bay in itself is the value that drives good people back into the city, those that want to be here. And those that want to be here, I think a long-term plan that is progression through all the city ranks, and, you know, I can tell you right now, I'd rather be in Morro Bay than in Bakersfield, or Morro Bay than in LA. So what are our recruiting efforts? How do we sell the value of being here? But, you know, as far as I'm concerned, we're a little top-heavy in this town with just the amount of people that we have working, and I really, you know, I know that the council doesn't have anything to act on here, but a more balanced message here, I think, is probably appropriate going forward, because I don't necessarily look at what was communicated today as a well-balanced message. I'll yield back the rest of my time.
AGP, are there any more raised hands in the queue?
No, Madam Mayor. That's it.
Thank you. If there's no further public comment, I will close this hearing and bring it back to council. Rachel, you want to address that public comment? We did a wage study that was just recent in comparison?
Correct. We did a 2023 classification and compensation study, and at that point, we looked at police officer was one of the 23 classifications that we looked at, as well as police sergeant. And we were found to be very under-market with the local cities, and that is why we entered into three-year contracts last year with substantial wage equity adjustments and COLAs. We are still, we are still under where many of our local cities are, but we are making progress with this three-year contract.
Thank you for that. Yeah. Just to that point, Rachel, if I remember right, when we did that study, it was just the local county, the cities within the county. It wasn't necessarily cities that have comparable budgets and sizes and things like that.
So we actually did look at some cities that were outside our county, so that had comparable budgets. So one of them was Marina, and I don't have them off the top of my head, but we did look very, we hired a consultant, and he also assisted us with looking at what comparable agencies. And one of the drivers was either budget, whether or not they were full-service cities, and also, you know, what, you know, what they offered as a city, and if they had tourism as one of their components.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? I think that the challenge is always finding the talent that'll stay, and certainly, the idea of living in Morro Bay is attractive, but when you're competing with hiring bonuses in Paso Robles and other areas, you can still live in Morro Bay and work there for more money. Trying to live within our financial means brings a challenge to balance all this out. So we appreciate the staff we have, and we are very blessed that we have a great team. And I look at some of the departments and the, you know, I always use the fire department. I mean, we have zero vacancies there, and once in a while, somebody who's maybe newer and looking at building their career, but most of them are retiring out of their 30 years. So that speaks a lot for the culture of the city, and I appreciate that. You need a motion for this? Or is this a receivable? No, this is a motion. Receive and file this report.
Move to receive and file?
Yep. This is a receive and file. No action needed. Thank you for the report. I appreciate that. And thank you to the staff members who are here and the SEIU representatives. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. We're going to resume the meeting, and we are moving on to our business item, update and discussion on city-owned properties, and I will be turning it over to the Community Development Director.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Mayor Lon Singwald, your Community Development Director. This evening, I'll be giving a presentation on the city-owned property inventory. Since I've started at the city, I have heard from council members, advisory committee members, and members of the public that they would really like to see a comprehensive inventory of city-owned properties and an identification of the properties that may have more development potential than others. So I'm pleased to be able to make this presentation this evening. I also want to acknowledge our assistant planner, Eric Valentine, who put together this inventory and map and did an outstanding job. So first, the purpose of the inventory, really, it's a tool to support the council's efforts to make strategic land use, economic, and fiscal decisions. It also provides transparency for the community on the city's portfolio of real estate. The intent is for staff to update this inventory periodically as circumstances change and we become aware of new information. I also wanted to point out that the inventory does have what we call a development potential rating, and I want to clarify that the rating of parcels as developable or potentially developable is in no means a policy determination. It's really just stating that these are parcels that are less constrained than others and could have a higher likelihood of development potential. And that development rating could very easily change based on new information, based on council direction, based on council goals, but it's just staff's first cut at development So background, in 2015, the city engineer provided a very similar report to council, and we did use that as a template for putting this inventory and map and presentation together. So the current status is the city owns approximately 358 acres of real property across 68 parcels. Some of the, most of them, of course, are in the city limits. Some are just outside of the city limits. This number does include some of the tidelands leased sites, but not all of them. I'll go into some more detail on that on future slides. We also saw that it does not include the Dog Beach, and it doesn't include any of the city's right-of-ways or easements. Also, I did send out a memo to the council and posted that online for the public, just clarifying some refinements that we've made to the inventory and the map since this staff report was published. So I have two maps here, one of north city limits, the other of the south portion. The orange reddish color identifies the city-owned parcels, and you can see we've given a map ID to each of the city-owned properties with a description. This corresponds with the inventory that's also attached to the staff report. You can just see here the Cloisters Park. On the bottom there, number 41, it's actually actually in Moro Dunes, um, RV Park and other various, uh, city-owned properties. And then looking at the southern portion of the city, again, identifying the city-owned properties, um, I do want to note, one of the clarifications I described in that memo that I sent out earlier today is the sand spit is shown as all, uh, orange, city-owned. However, the sand spit consists of four parcels and the city actually only owns the northernmost parcel and the other parcels, I believe, are, uh, privately owned. The city just owns the northernmost one. Another clarification that I provided actually corresponds more with the northern map is that this inventory did omit the, uh, parcels that are jointly owned with the Cayuga Sanitary District, so the former wastewater treatment plant site, um, the northernmost Moro Dunes RV Park, uh, parcel and also the Martin Marietta Concrete, uh, Plant. So those are jointly on the city, of course, has majority ownership of those parcels, but they were omitted from the, from this inventory and will be included in the next iteration. So I already explained this, so on the inventory, we have this zero to four rating of development potential. And again, that doesn't mean a property has been identified for development or there's a policy for development on that property. It's really just that it's less constrained. It doesn't contain any essential, um, uh, city facilities or, or infrastructure and so it could be looked at for possible development, um, depending on what the council's goals are. Also, there is a column on the inventory, uh, that is titled Building Insurable Value that really is not an accurate representation, it's not an accurate representation of market value, it's just the best information that we have available regarding valuation on that property and that's just based on our, um, insurance, uh, information. So now focusing in on the parcels that staff did identify as, uh, highly feasible for, for development, um, they're summarized on this slide here. I did put a box around five parcels that are all connected to Market Plaza and the point of this box is not in any way to, you know, highlight development potential of Market Plaza, but just pointing out that there's not a lot of properties that were identified as highly, um, feasible for development and five of them are all related to that Market Plaza collection of parcels that the council is aware of and that we've discussed, um, in the past. So beyond Market Plaza, um, you can see, let's see on the bottom here, number 41, uh, Moro Dunes, there's currently a, a tenant operating the RV, uh, park there. 460 Downing Street, that property was a little bit of a, a surprise, um, to staff and I'll go into a little bit more information on that property. Uh, 570 Dunes, that's a house that the city owns just adjacent to the City Hall, City Hall, there's currently a tenant living in that residence and of course, the teen center property is another one that I think the council and a lot of the public are very familiar with as being city-owned and possibly available for development or a new tenant, currently vacant. So I'm just going to show some aerials of those, uh, that, those parcels that I just, uh, listed off. So teen center building, again, it's, it's vacant. I have, I received quite a bit of interest from, uh, potential, uh, tenants, um, interested in occupying that, that building. Uh, 570 Dunes, that's the house adjacent to the Public Services Building, um, down by City Hall, currently rented out. And then the next few aerials are just identifying properties that are part of that Market Plaza, uh, collection of parcels that's been discussed before. And also I want to clarify that by calling these Market Plaza parcels, it's no way, um, suggesting that they would have to be sold and developed together. I know that's been a point of discussion with, with the council before and I think that's something the council will probably discuss again in the future. It's just pointing out that it's part of that same assemblage of parcels. Again, the Market Plaza parcel, 781, uh, Market and Moro Dunes RV Park. And then 460 Downing, so in doing a little bit of research on this property, it's owned, uh, residential, um, it is, you know, feasible for development. I did find some old documentation that talks about the purpose of the city's ownership of that property to be for a, uh, future, um, extension of, uh, Bolton Street, uh, paralleling Highway One and I'm not sure what, what the plans are for that, but that has been, um, noted. Um, also there's a 10-foot wide PG&E easement along the, the western portion of that, that property that could constrain, um, development. So, uh, in conclusion of the 68, 69 city-owned parcels, um, the vast majority are currently developed with the essential public facilities, um, infrastructure and amenities, um, you know, parkland, um, it's very, it's not likely that the city would, uh, make those properties available for development. Um, however, there are some properties that do have development potential and this could be an opportunity for economic and fiscal growth for the city, but the, you know, optimal strategy for the city's real estate portfolio really depends on what the city's specific goals are. For example, if there were a plan to relocate the city hall, suddenly the city hall properties become, you know, available for potential development. And of course, as I mentioned, city staff will periodically update the inventory and map. And we also put a note in the staff report that the council may consider, uh, directing staff to, um, assign, uh, an advisory committee to assist in further evaluation of these city-owned properties. And that concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Singwald. I appreciate that. Um, I know we've all been waiting just to get an update, um, 10 years as a while to see some of the city properties. The Downing Street property, as I recall, because we looked at it, uh, a couple of years ago, was kept vacant because there was an intent to, um, put in the Tri-W project on the hillside there and they needed an access road because the only way into that property would be coming up around the Moro Bay Boulevard exit into the property and they needed a way out. And so that's why I was told we kept that Downing lot years ago, um, but the Tri-W project never has come to fruition. But I know that was the reason we kept that lot. It's the only way out, um, other than circling back, so probably as a fire exit or I don't know, but I do know that was supposedly the reason we kept that Downing lot. Um, questions? Councilmember Edwards, questions? Nope, questions?
Um, where, where the city hall is, um, number 30, does that include the chamber, the building that the chamber is in too? I, I don't, where is that on here?
That's, it looped in with the library, I believe, isn't it?
Oh, it's kind of the library, so that's.
It's all the same parcel.
It's not a separate lot, although it, it looks like a separate lot, but maybe it's not.
So I'm, I'm pulling up the map here. I believe it is a separate lot.
But it's combined.
Yeah, on the update, it's combined for some reason, but I thought they're two separate parcels, the old fire station property.
Right.
Where the modular is. He's looking that up.
Yeah, so it's, it's difficult for me to tell on this scale of the map. I'd have to take a look at the inventory. I can, maybe when, I could take a look as there's other, if you want to ask other questions.
Okay, thanks.
Separate. It's on the, um, packet page 160. We, you'd be able to see the library and then, um, Visitor Center is number 20, um, parcel, map parcel 29. Um, and they add there, the city hall is under, um, is under, um, city hall, just seeing it. City hall is here, parcel, mm, 30. And during the orange and then the.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see 29 on that, on the color. Oh.
Library and Visitor Center, 29.
Oh, so those are two, one parcel, not two parcels.
That's what they have.
Interesting.
But they, they have a different address.
Well, you, you can check that out. They should have probably, I would assume two APN numbers, don't you think, Carol?
I believe there, one's the county property and the, you know, it's the city's property, but chief, maybe, do you have any recollection? No, no, it was before your time. Go ahead.
Director Singwald, the property that, uh, the harbor department uses for their storage yard and the commercial fishermen use adjacent to where the old tank farm was, is that leased from Vistra?
Question?
No, not where, not where the Santa's house is, uh, next to the creek, um, just, just east of the, just east of the pedestrian bridge.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
The, um, so the, the harbor department has their, uh, storage yard there as well as a workshop and then behind that, the CF, the commercial fishermen have storage back there. I'm just wondering if that's like a long-term lease with Vistra or if that's city-owned property, it's, it's adjacent to the creek.
Can I, so you're talking about that, that area for storage across from Moro Dunes? Uh, yeah.
Exactly.
My understanding is that is under license from Vistra? I just heard this recently. I, I'm not aware of an actual lease where the city's making payments out to it. Certainly something we could look into.
Yeah. So, so in 1997, when PG&E divested itself, we entered into numerous agreements and we obtained that area through an easement from PG&E, permanent easement to use that property. Now, maybe later on, when I wasn't here with negotiation with Vistra, that changed, but way back then, and I'm certain I can find it if the city can't, it was one of the many easements that we worked out before they divested themselves and Duke took it over.
Any other questions? Open public comment on this item? Anyone for public comment? There we go.
I apologize, my iPad died about 30 minutes ago. I need to read from my phone.
I, I believe we received your letter.
Thank you. I'll just briefly overview, um, um, mayor and, and council members. Um, I appreciate you giving me a few minutes to speak, um, concerning my project. Um, my name is Owen Champy and I'm a, a moral bay property owner. We own a parcel at 460 Erle Street. I've attached this document into the correspondence this evening and I believe it's pages 60, it's pages 83 through 87 in the, the last correspondence book and that has all the details in it. But briefly, um, I understand that this is a review of city-owned properties and uses and this is not a determination of parcels to dispose of at this time, but I just wanted to make my presentation that I've been trying to make an attempt to communicate about this parcel for about three years now. On spreadsheet item 62, uh, there's an item listed as abandoned well site next to future RV Park. That future RV Park is our development and the future is now. The final plans were submitted to the building department last week along with the plan review fees. We hope to start construction soon. At this time, I would like to take the opportunity to create a line of communication with the decision-makers in the city regarding item 62, which is addressed 490 Erle Street. We've been attempting to make contact with staff about surplus real estate, um, since Scott Collins was still the city manager back in 2022. Um, and we've had brief conversations on and off since then. Uh, we believe now would be a good time to make a request to deem this parcel a surplus and analyze the benefit of integrating it into a new active adjacent project. Again, pages 84 to 87 of the correspondence sheets detail everything down to the APNs, the CUP approval number, the CDP approval number and our building department, um, application number. It seems like a good opportunity to present our case as it relates to our project in this adjacent parcel. Please keep us informed if any meeting is planned to deem any sites as surplus. We would like to integrate this unused parcel into our project either as a sale, lease or lot line adjustment. My new favorite saying at council meetings from Councilman Eccles, who attended the planning commission meeting where our project was approved, is "A culture of yes." And we thank him for that and I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
Madam Mayor, we do have one raised hand. Please stand by.
Thank you.
I've allowed you to unmute your microphone. You may continue.
Eric, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
So, um, I, I would, I would actually like some clarity on what, uh, specific ramifications took place to deem some of these lots as, uh, definitely not developable, developable and probably not developable? Like where, where, who, how is that determination made? Number one, I'd just be interested to know. Number two, um, I've, uh, extended a hand multiple times so far, uh, to fund any city project that benefits anybody in the city where children can benefit and quite frankly, at this point, where the city can benefit from any development that needs to happen. I volunteered to pay for moral bay elementary, only heard from one of the council members and, you know, not including the mayor, so mayor, not really sure, you know, what the issue is, but, you know, let's make a deal and figure out how to lock down that particular building so no one else comes in and develops on top of the city. I'm going to extend the same level of, of commitment to the city by saying if there are developable, developable solutions, instead of selling off the assets, I am willing to open the checkbook to develop these things in conjunction with the city. Because my worry coming out of this, this is like one of many topics, is we're going to present on something with no plan. So, you know, what I thoroughly anticipate happening here is, is another advisory committee that happens to be put together, that doesn't rate, generate a plan, to figure out how to maximize on these opportunities. This is a lot of real estate that can really like make a difference in the community. The teen center is one of them. I went to moral bay high school, that thing used to be booming, it's been sitting for a long time. So, like, let's figure out what we need to do to get it done without another advisory committee, number one, and number two, no consultants to come in and tell the city how to develop their land, their resources and all the things that will benefit community, community fundamentals that help the growth and trajectory of the city. So yet for the fifth or sixth or seventh time, I'm going to extend again my financial contributions to this city council, plus you mayor, to help get some of these things going. So whatever we need to do here, like, let's actually start to make some momentum around a lot of these things that generate value for the community. There's a ton of parking lots, convert them into things that have to be, like, you have to pay for parking. If you're a tourist, you have to pay for parking. If the city owns the parking, now you're generating revenue. Fairly simple to do. All of these things, if money is an issue, let's figure it out, let's get together, write me a bill, I'll pay for whatever it is that you all want to develop here, but there is a lot more to develop here than just what is stated here as not developable or likely not developable, whatever the case is. Let's make it developable and figure out a solution to get some of these things going because quite frankly, we're leaving a, a lot on the table here in the way of growth. So I'll yield back the rest of my time.
AGP, any other raised hands in the queue?
No, Madam Mayor, that was the extended public comment.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment before I close?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This, uh, subject is dear to my heart. Um, I've visited every property that's on this list, even the well field, the old well fields that are out in Choral Creek. And there's an obvious need, uh, to capitalize on these parcels. I think somebody's talked a long time ago in a book about hiding your assets under a bushel basket and I think that we need to, uh, consider moving that bushel basket and putting these assets to work for our citizens. There's a need right now that so many people have stated regarding, um, acquiring the old moral bay elementary. I know there's a price bag caking around. If this would run like a business, I think, and, and I owned all these properties, I would sit down on a back of a torn envelope and one side you put the assets and the other side you put your obligations. And we have a bunch, we have valuable property and I believe that the capital is tied up in those valuable properties, the teen center, the, the moro site, the city hall. If, if that was imagined properly, uh, we could buy the schoolhouse. And as I stated about a month ago, we could move the police station there, we could move the city hall there, we could have. hall there, and we could have a lot of the city facilities there, be right next to our current community center. We'd have a wonderful park in the center of town instead of having all these miscellaneous properties all over. So I don't know who this gentleman was that just called in, but please consider that you've been challenged. I'll put in some money to help. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Questions or comments to my right?
Thank you for that presentation, Erolin. I have no comments. I mean, this is a good list that we can use. I mean, if I had to go down this list, I think there's three pieces of property that, you know, I wouldn't mind taking a look at, one being the teen center, two being just the building, Market Street, and then three being Downing Street as an opportunity to generate revenue, to put it out, to RFP for both visitor service so that we can get sales tax or TOT on those two other sites, at least as a start. And as opposed to this gentleman who just called, I just chatted with my cohort here, and we're going to call him and see if he can, he will meet with us and see where that comes.
Yes, thank you, Erolin. If nothing else, it's good to have all this information updated, and hopefully we can stay on top of this and just always have this at our fingertips because, you know, and this is before you were here, but it took a really long time to get this to us in this form, and I guess it just took you, the right people, being in the right place at the right time, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I just wanted to make a comment to the phone call that we just had and say that there has been vision, there has been planning done before. I've mentioned it at several meetings. It could act as a foundation, economic roadmap, as well as the downtown waterfront strategic plan. So there are some of those kind of preliminary plans that were looked at by many, many community members involved in working groups before, so I would suggest take a look at that. And I also did want to hear if you had an answer to the caller with regard to how, you know, how you defined whether or not a property was sellable or not sellable. I think he wanted some information on that.
Sure, so it's important, I think, to emphasize that this isn't a vacant land survey. This is all city-owned properties, and the vast, vast majority of these properties are developed with city facilities. And as I mentioned, you know, earlier in my presentation, there's obviously a lot of discussion about the city, you know, potentially acquiring Morro Elementary, and part of that discussion has been about using the old schoolhouse as a city hall. And I know there hasn't been any type of policy decision on that or any consensus, but that's just an example of if that were to become a city objective, then it changes what the, you know, potentially developable properties look like because suddenly the existing city hall facilities could be on the table for development potential. But it really depends on what the council's goal is. So, you know, many of the parcels that are highlighted, red, as definitely not developable, it's, you know, the fire station, the community center, library, so these are occupied by, you know, essential existing city facilities as well as, you know, city infrastructure as well.
Thank you for this report. Just to share a little bit with the public, this is something that the council asked staff to provide, and it's a result of some of the property negotiations that we had at the beginning of the year, and we felt that it was important to put together an inventory of all the city properties and look at those properties, be able to look at those properties in a holistic fashion, and the only way we can look at them holistically is by having a list of them. So, thank you, staff, for, thank you, Director Singwald, for putting that together and your staff who helped with it. We appreciate it very much. And so we're going to use this as a tool now, moving forward. Of course, we're extremely well aware that we're in negotiations with the school district, that there's the Vistra property, the power plant property that at some point may come into play. We've got the Cayucus property, the joint power property from our wastewater treatment plant, our old wastewater treatment plant. So this is going to be used as a tool now to help us negotiate in the best fashion possible and find the highest and best uses in terms of these properties moving forward. This is, this is, so I suppose my emphasis here is this is the beginning of our process and the beginning of our planning, and to have all of the knowledge necessary, and who knows, we may just get a nice big fat check from Mr. D'Angelo's as well to help us with this process. So, thank you again, Director Singwald. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, I echoed that. Thank you for putting this together in a short time at our request. I think this gives the community an idea of what their assets are because they're, this is their community. I would want to, as has been shared, use this as a starting point, and in that starting point, I guess we'll have to come back and circle around with council direction when we have some opportunity to really process this, what our next steps are in this. You heard one of the speakers tonight share an interest in a piece of property that would benefit the project he's starting on Erle Street, which is an old well that we're not using, so I guess it would beg the question, I would want to know from staff, you know, what is the situation that the city need to keep that property? I know it's next to the creek, so what are the impacts if we tried to sell it versus somebody acquiring it to add to their property? I think those are all the questions that follow. The Ashers Well Field is, was brought up out in the Choro Valley that we abandoned years ago and don't use. I mean, what, how does that status factor into whether we keep those properties or we don't?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll take, I think, most of that question. So there are some unknowns in terms of what our utility needs are in the future. You know, we know that right now, for example, we have state water. It's about 90% of our water supply. We also have some water wells on Lower Itasca Dara Road. Excuse me, my voice is a little hoarse today. But that said, it could be in the future that we have reductions in our state water because of its reduced reliability, or we have problems with our existing water wells where they are now. We may want to look at using the well on Erle, for example. It's abandoned for now. It's not necessarily abandoned forever, especially as we embark on this recycled water project where we don't actually know how it's going to work, and we don't actually know all the details about where we will need wells. We think we do, but we don't know for sure. This would, in staff's opinion, not be the time to sell that property. I certainly sympathize with the owner of the adjacent property. It looks ideal to add on to that property, for sure. There's no question about that. Just from the city staff standpoint, at this time, would not be advisable. Now, Choro is a bit of a different story. Choro, that area floods a lot, and so, as the mayor knows, I know you've had some involvement down there. And then there also may be some opportunities to use at least one of those properties that's adjacent to Choro Creek for flood mitigation, and that might get us some credits towards an ag mitigation requirement that we have to complete for our coastal development permit for the sewer plant. So I think those properties as well, the council would be wise to hold off on because at the end of the day, those in Choro Creek, they do have low potential because of the flood area. But, you know, certainly anything's possible, and it's up to the council what they'd like to do with the properties.
Thank you for that, Mr. Qualick, and I think that's part of this equation is understanding what each one of these properties that we may think or identify as, well, we're not using that, it's abandoned, but when it factors into future development and growth or exchanges for things, then it makes it a little challenging when you're looking at the list, trying to figure out what is and isn't in play, but I appreciate that. That makes sense. I think we do know, and I agree with my colleague at the end, that the teen center, Market Street are definitely two that have been at the forefront, that, you know, we have kicked the can for a long time before the five of us got up here, and at some point we need to pull the trigger and make some decisions. So the teen center has been sitting vacant, but that wasn't due to this council or the council before. Boys and Girls Club had a contract. They didn't come through with the contract, and until they severed it this last year, we were under obligation to them, and so now we have an opportunity to act on that and make a determination, do we sell it? Do we lease it? You know, what is the greater value? I think being able to keep city property in our ownership, if we can have good lease terms, is always beneficial. But there comes a point, too, in the waterfront where we talked about the parking lot down there, I'll agree with the speaker that, you know, and many others who've said that the value is much greater than the parking. You know, parking lot down on the Embarcadero could be equivalent to two, three, four master leases if the city wanted to sell it somewhere to the, or lease it for 40 years, 50 years, similar to the Tylenes. So there's a lot of opportunity, but we have to make some decisions at some point, so definitely a starting point. Thank you. I appreciate it, yes.
Mr. Singwald, you mentioned, I thought, that the waterfront master leases were, you were going to talk about those, or there were, some of them were in here but not all of them, and I don't remember.
That was confusing, so thank you for the question. So the inventory and the map that you have before you this evening, it identifies some of the Tylenes lease sites, particularly the ones on, you know, the west side of Embarcadero, south of Marina Street. It doesn't include other Tylenes lease sites. That was really a, I would say, an omission. It should include all of them or none of them. My recommendation is, moving forward as we update this, to include none of them because there's a whole separate process where the Harbor Department manages those leases and puts them out for RFP when leases are up and you want to entertain redevelopment proposals. So I would suggest we keep that separate from this inventory moving forward.
And then also, you, I think you had the chessboard. Where is that? Is that in the green?
Yeah, right here.
Yeah, it's in the green, and I'm surprised by that.
So the reason for that, again, is that is included in the Centennial Parkway component of the kind of, the Market Plaza discussion that we've had in the past. It was in the previous RFQ for redevelopment of Market Plaza.
Okay, but that would be sold? That would be not retained by the city in, as?
So I think the thought process in including that as highly developable is if, you know, the council at some point in the future does decide to go forward with an RFQ and includes all of those parcels, including all of the Centennial Parkway, then the chessboard will be included in that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. So there are no recommended actions this evening, so we see and file. We have, we're almost at 9:30. We have one item left I'd really like to try and get to, and that is the analysis of alternatives for city attorney services if the council support's going to ask.
Yeah, because I think we probably all know what we want to do.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Councilmember LaFaye. Mr. Schultz?
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I'm going to try to be brief, too, because of the hour, and I'm going to go through the slides fairly quickly. It's just a recap of what has already been stated in my staff report. The item before you is the analysis of the alternatives for city attorney services, and the question for you tonight is whether you want to proceed with the salary schedule and job duties for an in-house city attorney, an employee, or whether you would like to continue with the way you've done it the past 10 years, which is by contracting with a city attorney. So what is a city attorney? The city attorney serves as a legal advisor and legal representative. Represents you in litigation, prepares ordinance and resolutions, reviews and drafts contracts, provides ethical advice, and any other legal services that the city needs to achieve through preventing risk management issues and undue risk, and also to achieve your goals. I explain it to a lot of people when they ask me, what does a city attorney do? Is, think of the city as a corporation, and it's really a corporate council with a corporate budget of $50 million and employees that was stated was 115, and we advise that corporation to the Board of Directors, which is the city council, and the stockholders are the citizens of the town. And so same as corporate council, you deal with personnel issues, you deal with contract issues, all the things that a corporate council does. The difference is, is everything we have to do is completely transparent and open and have to make all decisions in public, whereas a corporate council doesn't quite have to do that. The history, from 1964 until 2002, the city of Morro Bay contracted, outsourced its city attorney. I was the outsourced contract attorney from 1997 until 2000, the end of 2002. I thought it was 2003, actually. But right around the end of 2002, 2003, you contract it out. And then from 2002 until 2013, the city had an in-house city attorney, and that was me sitting in this chair during that time period. And then after I left in 2013 to the present, the city has contracted again for its city attorney services. So you're in the unique position to have both in-house and outside contract services, so that's why a lot of people understand the two differences, whereas many cities that are trying to make the jump from one to the other just don't know that unknown of how it would work. In 2013, that was at the very end of my tenure as in-house, we had two full-time equivalents employees. When I started in 2002, it was just me with no services. All my support was through other staff that was already within the organization, and then we went to halftime and then three fourths, and at the very end it was full-time with Dana. The in-house are outsourced. The things you need to think about is the community size. We're a very small town. Most in-house city attorneys are very large organizations, so that's why it's a little bit a unique situation when you're this small, considering whether to have an in-house city attorney. And the financial position, you know, you have to look at what's best for the city regarding your current financial position and which model works best for you. You take into account the history, as like I said, we've done both, so you've got history there as how it worked and what were the benefits and drawbacks, advantages and disadvantages. There definitely is no standard on one-size-fits-all approach. I still get approached by, how did it work in Morro Bay, being a small city? When I was in all the city attorney conferences, they were marveled by that. I've worked for big cities and I've worked for small cities. When, after I left here, I went to Los Gatos, which was what I still consider small, under 30,000. Both have merits and drawbacks, so it's, you know, really the city's decision on which option is best. The contract advantages, this is when you contract out, you know, you're going to get a larger pool of attorneys at a firm that can specialize in legal expertise as opposed to having that single person as a city attorney. You know, if the designated city attorney isn't available, sick, he's on vacations, or some other things, you do have other attorneys that can substitute in if you're with a firm. You can change personnel upon request by the city, so if the city attorney is someone that's just not a good fit, you can always ask that firm for additional person to sit in the city attorney's chair. There's no responsibility for human resources. The firm all does that and payroll functions, so you don't have that additional employee and I have down below. With that comes no additional purse cost. You know, you have immediate access to additional staff resources in event of a crisis, and you need to pull multiple attorneys in at one time, you do have that ability if you contract. A much easier ease of terminating, it's just an at-will. There's no severance. Typically, in your contracts for both city attorney and city manager, there's always some type of severance that if you do terminate with, without cause, then you do pay a severance for an in-house attorney, and you don't have those in contracts for outside source because they're independent contractors. And the contract advantages, you don't have to have any office space, there's no utilities, there's no technical support, no electronic devices that you need to provide. The disadvantages are, though, there's no one here located within the city facilities. You know, most of your meetings and conferences are done by Zoom, so they're not here, they're usually not available. They're usually not available for just that drop-in that's in-person and onsite to problem solve and be more proactive. I think most firms and city attorneys that are contracted are more reactive and after the issues have already arisen and are at a level that maybe can't be solved, it could have been solved at a much earlier level if you have an in-house person. They're not readily available to participate as if they're onsite. And again, proactive is what I've already mentioned. The direct cost per hour is, is, is much higher with a firm than it would be for a in-house person. And you, and you never know who you're getting besides the city attorney. You have the firm and your city appoint attorney is appointed, but then they decide which assistant city attorneys get appointed and when they get appointed and to what issues. And probably the most that I harp on is there's an inherent conflict because they're accountable both to the law firm and the city. They have billable hours, your associates have billable hours, their other partners have billable hours. And there's an inherent conflict between who you accountable to, the law firm or to the city. The in-house advantages, it's kind of just, you know, you're playing the other side, which I've already mentioned is, is they're available to attend meetings and provide proper responses to issues as they arise. You have office space onsite. You can participate in those early decisions. They can also be a very active member in your executive team. So you're really getting another high-level executive to help when you're in a small organization that, that can be very valuable. There's definitely more significant ties to the community. They, they're here, you know, the eight to five, they're just like any of the other staff, people here that are dedicated to the city as opposed to a firm and the person in Los Angeles that has three or four other cities that he's also accountable to, plus any of private clients. It definitely has a difference in the community ties. Your greater likelihood of preserving institutional knowledge, I mean, you know, it depends how long they're here, but I did find in my files in 1998, we terminated the lease for that area that we have for the harbor and the gear storage shed and entered into a permanent easement. So we do have a permanent easement. They wouldn't deed us that property, but for that area, the Fisherman's Gear Storage Shed had a lease, went from 2008 to 2018 with a five-year option. So I'm not sure what happened in 2023 and whether we ever renewed that with the Fisherman's Association. So there's, there's a wealth of knowledge you get from someone who's more inside and has that ability to understand all the issues that are happening. They can also perform other risk management and other things if that's something that, you know, happens through the process of looking at what you want the city attorney to perform. The cost can be completely controlled by budgeting staff levels. There's always going to be, when we get to the other slides, there's just huge fluctuations when you go with a firm, but with a salaried person, you know what that budget is. And, and I'm not going to say there, there aren't years that you might need more fees for specialty litigation, but even that is way more under control than, than I see in, in the outside contracting firms. And you can manage and control that special counsel because you've got the inside, in-house city attorney who can review those bills and set expectations with that special counsel and can help out on doing some of the issues. For example, if there is a litigation, they can be on the title of that document also and serve as co-counsel so that if there's hearings, there's anything that needs to be done, they can also participate and keep the fees down on special counsel. And lastly, they're only accountable to the city and the city council and not to the firm. The in-house disadvantages, expertise is always going to be limited. For, for this city, the, by far, the most important issues are, are land use, leases in the harbor and harbor issues in public works. Those are the three departments that has not changed. That's where most of my time has been spent the last few months. I've only met the fire chief. I haven't even had a single issue with him yet, which is always good when there's departments you don't have to work with. You're going to have personnel costs incurred regardless of the workload. So in other words, there's plenty to do. He's going to be busy for the 60 hours a week, just as most of your executive staff. So, but you, you, you get that as part of it. You're getting as many hours that are needed to complete that job at, you know. Attorney training is limited based on the city resources. You know, I, here I was able to always make it to the city attorney conference and the league conference, those were the two. And then obviously when I went to Los Gatos, who was in a limited amount of resources. So that was nice for training, but you know, that's always a little bit less than you have in a firm. They have more of a budget to send to training. But, you know, I think the city's always been very supportive of making sure that their employees are trained, at least when I was here. You know, limitations on the volume of work. It always takes, you know, you've got to prioritize and make certain that which, which items need to be done, but it, it's not an impossible task for the right person. You're going to have increase in purse costs that you wouldn't have if you did it outside. The city's, you know, paying part of my retirement because of it, you know? So you don't, and you didn't have that the last 10 years. So that's something to take into consideration. And you've got to provide and find that office space. We're always been limited. I started out in the public service building and moved over to City Hall when I was here, but both of those offices are now not available. So that, that's always a consideration of whether there's office space. The monetary analysis is set forth in the staff report, but based on, you know, a salary range, in, in the same salary range as your city manager with fully loaded benefits, it has been estimated somewhere between 400 and 420. And that's not only for the city attorney, that's for a full-time assistant also. And, and that model might work, it might not. I suggested that if, if you go with the in-house model, you just, for the time being, do the, do the recruitment and salary for that person. And once they're in, then they can converse with you on what their needs are. There's different models. My model, when I was in Los Gatos, started there. I had myself and I inherited a, an assistant, a deputy city attorney. And I used that model for a while, but then I decided I wanted to go back to the model of having a legal assistant as opposed to assistant city attorney for various reasons. And it saved the city some money also, but it provided more coverage for the city clerk's office and my office. So you'll have that. You'll have non-personal costs. This is, you know, the training, um, any other, you know, non-personal cost reimbursement for expenses or any of that nature. And then you've got, you know, there's always going to be a need for special counsel and usually in the budget, there was an amount that was set that could be used. So at least you had it in that budget, but I was required, if I was going to use that budget, I had to come to council and ask for approval and which special counsel was going, going to have that and determine whether that was the best use of those funds. So there's still checks and balances on using that. Some years when we had the MTBE, we even had to go above the amount that was set aside, but we also were able to obtain reimbursement for all of that from Shell. With Duke and Dynegy, that was done kind of like on a reimbursement agreement that you had with Vistra. So that was not taken out of this type of arrangement. And you're going to have that 25,000 to 50,000 in one-time costs, wherever their office is set up, whatever furniture or equipment, computers, phones, whatever would need to be installed. And I've tried to estimate these a little bit on the high side so that you can really see that, you know, it comes to about 550 to 700,000 in, in budgeting for the city attorney's office if you did it in-house. If you look at the analysis of contract attorneys, I, I reviewed and did PRAs for a number of cities, many more than this on the list, and then kind of went through them and, and tried to determine which ones I thought were relevant. These are grouped in cities and how much they have spent, and this is the total amount they have spent. And I'll explain why I just used the total and didn't break it down into more. If you needed that, we could. And if you went to cited on a contract attorney, we certainly would look at this much more closer, which firms represented these different cities, who the city attorneys were there, and, and look at how much was spent in general versus specific special litigation. But the first part of it is, you know, Mor Bay, Pismo, Tescadero, Solvang, Grover Beach, Arroyo Grande and Paso. Those are what I consider, you know, the central coast, San Luis Obispo County. And then below it are, I tried to find ones that I felt were a little bit involved in the coastal zones and which were smaller cities within there, and that's the Galita-Carmel, Pacific Grove, Capitola, Marina, Carpinteria, Guanimi and Half Moon Bay. And, and you can, you can see, you know, the difference in what I consider cities, they all have issues. I mean, you know, I've heard so many times that Mor Bay's unique and it has issues that other cities don't have. Every single issue I've worked in, and I can name, you know, quite a few, all the way here in the central coast, all the way down to Solvang. I've done work for Solvang, Guadalupe, Santa Maria, Oceano, Pismo Beach, Tescadero, King City, all the way up to Gilroy. I think the only two that I've never, San Luis Obispo, obviously, but the only two that I've never worked for is, is probably Paso and Arroyo Grande. But everybody else I have within the county at one point in time. And then, like I said, for cities in the Bay Area also, and they all have their major issues. But what I find, what I found really interesting in some of these cities have very low city attorney's bills. And, you know, you, you can't say they don't have issues. I mean, at Tescadero, when I was interim city attorney there, you know, they had some of the major developments with Walmarts and Home Depots and they were very contentious and very much needed legal fees on development agreements. And so in my mind, if, when you delve into this, you'll find there's either a very conscientious city attorney working for a firm that has a philosophy of, you know, not putting multiple attorneys on the same file to bill and also have a very good, probably rule best in-house checks and balances to make someone is reviewing those bills and councils reviewing those bills with whoever their city attorney, if it's contract, to make certain that they are being kept at, at a lower amount. And for, you know, some of them look very large, like Mor Bay was at the top. I can't quite read the figures, but you know, there's some that are a million or very close to the million. And all of those, including ours, did include specialty litigation. So included in, in the Mor Bay numbers are the Vistra, um, special counsel was needed for that or specialty items. And, and so, and we got reimbursed for that. So although that's the total amount that they billed, that's not necessarily the total amount that we were out of those dollars. And the same with Pismo Beach, they have, they had a four or five-month trial that they did not prevail on, but that's why theirs were so much higher. And they just got done with another major litigation that went on forever that they did not prevail on. But Tescadero and, and some of those are, are very much within line. And so, you know, at the end of the day, when, when you look at it, you, if you had the correct, if you look at it just from a financial standpoint, I want the lowest, that's the most important thing to me, Rob. It actually, it, it comes out that your contractor, city attorney could be less if you keep them within their budget amount and, and, you know, don't get multiple attorneys billing and review their files and make them accountable. It is possible to be under that. I told you this, you know, the number of 700,000 for the in-house, it is possible to be under that. I, I was trying to find the documentation and I couldn't through our site because it's so long ago, but in, in 1997, when I was with the firm, there were 16 litigation matters. We were in litigation with the regional water quality control. We were in litigation over just with Cayucus. We had so many litigation matters here and our fees were going over that 500,000 range. And that's when the city council at that time started discussing bringing, bringing the matter in-house. And in that timeframe, the budget to bring it in-house was less than 250,000. So we did reduce fees quite a bit. And I think when we left, we were still under 500,000 for the city attorney in-house budget. So, you know, if you're just looking from a cost standpoint though, you look at, oh my gosh, we spent, you know, a million dollars in legal fees and 700,000 to bring it in-house. That's, that's a no-brainer, but it's not that simple. You can bring your attorney's fees down to reasonable amounts with the proper checks and balances that can be put in place. And I, and I think some of these, if you did go that way, I'd be contacting some of those cities to find out what, how, how were you able to do this and what checks and balances did you put in? So that ends my analysis of it and kind of up to you guys to decide and discuss, deliberate, take public comment first and then decide whether you want to direct staff to move forward within, the first thing we do, they'd come back within hopefully the two weeks to put together the salary schedule and, um, job description and then move forward with a couple other issues. We'd probably be, bring back to you whether you wanted to perform that recruitment in-house or whether you wanted to hire an outside consultant to do that. If it was for in-house city attorney and if it was for outsourcing, then obviously we, the direction we'd bring would be to do the request for proposals and move forward with that process.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Questions to my right?
No.
Questions to my left?
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. I really appreciate the time that you put into this. This is what you, what you're here for, um, this analysis. So I'm glad that we got to this tonight. I appreciate the breakdown of what you gave us from cities around and afar. And I also do appreciate that you mentioned the fact that we did get some reimbursement with regard to the work that was done in '23, '24 from Vistra. Interestingly enough, looking at '22 and '23, it was almost like equal in terms of the 794 and if you took the money away. But aside from that, my question to you is based on kind of the time that you've spent here so far, you mentioned it a little bit earlier, but you would, when you say that the workload taking away, the pausing with Vistra, the pausing with offshore wind, the pausing with, well, also having the water treatment plant where it's at, moving forward in a different direction, would you say that the workload is less or comparable?
So I wasn't here during that timeframe when it was hectic, but I can compare it to when, you know, you had the Duke energy and you had the Dynegy energy issues. It seemed we were all, we've been dealing with that power plant since 1998 and various issues as to ownership or easements or, or, so that's always going to be an issue. And I think you're always going to need special counsel. But it's, it's not because the attorney might not be able to handle the issues that come up. It's more the relationships and, and what I've spoken about is it's, it's so very important to have counsel that is very familiar with the Energy Commission, especially in light of the fact that BESS has removed their permitting and it's going to, if it does move forward, it's all going to take place in Sacramento. And, you know, I, I probably spent almost every single week for a year in Sacramento, but I also had help from other councils during, during the time when they were trying to modernize and get their permits from the California Energy Commission. And they had hearings in this room for two or three days. So you can't be in hearings for two and three days and then have to do the contract work and everything else. So I think you'll always need special counsel to help the city on that issue. The other one that I remember was, you know, MTBE was, was definitely a, a, you know, when it hit, it hit big and we had to do something immediately and work night and day and we needed help from outside counsel.
Yeah. So sometimes.
Hired the best in the state to do that. So you're going to, you're going to need it a little bit, but I certainly think, yes, with the wharf being done, I think any attorney would have been capable of steering the city in the right way. And so it'd be up to that attorney whether he wanted to, you know, needed that outside help or not.
I also.
It's always going to be.
Sorry, Mr. Schultz.
No, but that's, I mean, that's with the in-house, you need those same checks and balances that they, they come to you and explain the reasoning why they need counsel. balances that they, they come to you and explain the reasoning why they need counsel and how it's going to work to make sure there's checks and balances on, on even the in-house city attorney to make sure they're picking the right person.
Yeah, I appreciate you going into that and the potential need for special counsel, especially since some things are paused. We don't know, you know, whether or not they'll come back at us again or how, so it's out there. The other thing, I really appreciate you mentioning finding somebody with relationships with other groups within the county that you might be working with. I appreciate you mentioning that. But I guess I would also want to ask you, and I know this might seem random, or maybe not, but what would be the ideal relationship between a city manager and a city attorney in your mind?
It's a, it's a unique one. Like I said, I think the best part of it is, is that the city manager has another person on their executive team, but that person's not a subordinate. It's not, it's not even equal. We serve such different roles. I would say, if you asked all the city managers that worked with me, you know, I was definitely part of the team and helped the council try to, to meet their goals and find ways to say yes, instead of no, you can't legally do that. But I would also say the biggest obstacle is making certain that they also stay in their lane. They're not policymakers, they're not, you know, they're there to provide, make certain that the city stays out of risk and doesn't put itself in any type of legal jeopardy. So it's a unique relationship in that we're separate. And I would say the other way around is mine was more telling them they need to file, make sure they're following council's direction. So it's a unique one, but it's typically separate. I'm not in charge of her, she can't tell me what to do, and she can't tell the city attorney what, what to do. But I've, I seem to have made them work. There's been a few that I'm still in touch with that I didn't expect to stay in touch with, so. But I think you would find that most city managers relished in the idea of having an inside city attorney, because it helps keep costs down, and I think most executives would enjoy that opportunity to work with someone. And I think there's some that have had inside counsel that would kind of be able to tell the difference of, you know, what that means from being able to call them or ask them questions and not worry about how much is that gonna end up on the billing.
Yeah, the one thing that, of course, we would all want, just like we would want with all staff, is to be able to have them actually live in Morro Bay to be among us, right? But there's something to be said, maybe, about that in-house aspect that you're getting at.
Well, and I've always heard that argument that, you know, if a city employee doesn't live here, oh, they're not vested because they don't live in Morro Bay. And I disagreed with that. But I think they need to be at least local and understand and be here from eight to five. I mean, I didn't live in Morro Bay. I was, I've always lived in San Luis Obispo, but, you know, I was, still am and always was committed to Morro Bay.
Public comments open on this item? Come on, Dan, don't wait. Click it along.
A little slow.
That happens to all of us.
Over the years, this has been a huge topic of discussion by the citizens of Morro Bay for many reasons. And primarily, the reasons were these. They didn't feel like they were getting the personal representation from Morro Bay from the large contract company out of Los Angeles. They felt, they felt like the large contract company was there for billable hours, that they were charging and nickel and diming if they thought for three seconds about Morro Bay, that there was a charge for $500 or whatever. They felt like they were being nickelled and dimed for their drive time, for their hotels, for everything. But the main thing was they didn't feel like they had the personal hands on what Morro Bay was, what the city council felt that Morro Bay was and needed to become, and the best ways to legally maneuver and to get there. An in-house, and without fail, they have all supported an in-house attorney versus the big, the big powerhouse attorney firms out of the big cities. I've never heard any, any citizen tell me otherwise. We need, we need to get an attorney that's responsive to our city, to our city council, what the view is, what our hopes and dreams are, how do we best maneuver getting there? What is the logistics legally to get there? And every citizen I've ever talked to said, we need an in-house attorney that is local, that lives in San Luis County, that's out of San Luis County, not out of LA, not out of the Bay Area, but here representing Morro Bay as their sole interest. That's all I have. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Dan. AGPR, are there any raised hands in the queue?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have one in the queue. I've given you the capability of unmuting microphone, you're available to speak.
Oh, sir, are you okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. I don't know what, what way the city council's gonna sway here, so what my hopes are is that the recommendation here is to bring somebody in-house. So I want to work a couple of things backwards here. So if you, if you take the analysis that was done at 400K a year, and I'm just talking, minus all of the things that we think an attorney would need with a flashy office and a bunch of phones and all that other stuff, let's just take that out of the equation. Let's just say 400K a year for the sake of the conversation. Mr. Schultz, if you're not making $300 an hour, you're probably not charging enough. And I say that because that's what I'm charged by the in-house counsel that I have. And if you work that backwards into the 400K, if we were to contract out what we used as a baseline, that's 1,330 connections that we would have to a contracted attorney that we would have to, that we would have to reach out to them 1,330 times, right? Which is roughly 3.64 hours of conversations a day annualized. And I want to direct a couple of things back here, that if the right internal attorney, which my, the person that I love the most, the person that I hate the most, that keeps me in the loop on the business, acts as a chief of staff to governance, to make sure that the in-house attorney sits in between two things. Not what we should do, not what we do, but instead what we should be doing. And this city's got a lot of what we should be doing that needs to get done. So, you know, my recommendation here is, you know, that we really think about bringing in-house counseling, because it's a direct connection to the community, it's a direct connection to the staff, it keeps the city within the bounds that they need to be operating in, including up to and including accounting mistakes. We don't want to have those things happen anymore. And, you know, having an in-house attorney, it plays more specifically to making sure that counsel can get done what they need to get done, what should be done, not the way we've been doing it, but the way we should be doing it. And just by that list of properties that we showed in the topic before this, we're gonna need in-house counsel to get some of those zones changed if we're actually gonna grow a portion of the community. And the right in-house attorney will always think on behalf of everyone and make sure that governance is in the way of getting things done legally, legitimately, and the way that, that the directed pathway would be in the strategy. So, you know, I really encourage us to think about bringing somebody in-house that could be a direct connection to the community, and I'll yield back the rest of my time.
Thank you. Are there any other raised hands in the queue?
No, Madam Mayor, that was the extent of the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to counsel. Mr. Schultz, thank you for stepping into this role and helping guide us in our transition from start to finish. I think we appreciate it, and I say "we," I mean our community. I, my preference is, is that we pursue looking for an in-house city attorney and that we do the recruiting in-house. If we aren't able to find that person that can serve the needs and the purposes of our community, we can shift gears and look at contract services. I think that some of the lessons we've learned in this, and I've had the good fortune of being able to serve on counsel with an in-house city attorney and come back and serve with a contract attorney. So I, I see the pros and cons and the values, the advantages and disadvantages to both. But this community is, at this time, made it clear that their desire is to come back in-house. It's unfortunate that some of the things that transpired over the last few years have led us to some of the positions we're in, that we need legal counsel. We perhaps could have been advised better, my personal feeling, I'm just speaking for myself. But the reimbursement policies are great now that are being utilized for these larger corporate projects and things, and I think regardless of in-house or contract, that'll continue. And I think our biggest lesson learned from, from some of this is about having better checks and balances, regardless of how we do that as far as accountability for hours and billing, and I don't see us going backwards on that. So that's, that's been a lesson learned, and I would look to my counsel to see if there's other comments, or I can make a motion. Comments?
Yeah, just a brief comment before your motion. You know, we've, obviously, everyone has given this a tremendous amount of thought and analysis, and thank you, interim attorney Schultz, for the analysis that you provided for us. One of the things that I think about in cost is, I'm not necessarily looking for the cheapest attorney or the cheapest legal counsel for the city, I'm looking for the best. I'm looking for an individual that can be a true partner to the city and to all the department heads that are sitting here, and our city manager, and to the city council. So even, even if it's an equivalent number, or potentially even if in-house were slightly more, if we're getting better legal advice, in the long run, that's still a saving. So that went into my calculus as well, so I just wanted to say that.
Can I, how shall I address you? Sir Schultz? Is it, did you get, did you get a title yet?
Just interim city attorney.
Okay. So if we would have, if you would have stayed here and not left Morro Bay, in my eyes, we would still have, we wouldn't have even had this lawsuit with Vistra at all, you know, because we would have been able to get the property as, per the agreement that you created. So I, yeah, I'm also in favor of in-house. I've experienced, I've had a kind of a bad experience with the contract attorney, and really, even if you take out the charges for Vistra, we're still on the high end comparatively to all the other cities that you've shown, so I'm very confident that we should try that.
Anyone else? I'll make a motion to direct staff to prepare a job description, salary range, and recruitment schedule for an in-house city attorney, and prepare a request for proposals.
No, we would just do the first part.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was reading the second line. Take out the request, in-house recruitment for an in-house city attorney.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again. Future agenda items?
I, I have one, or actually, a couple. Let's see. I propose that we have a sub-council subcommittee for the Morro Elementary School property.
I'll second that.
I'm a no. I feel that all the information should come to all council.
I have a second.
Okay, you're gonna do the work on it, then? So you want to bring the item for future?
Well, I don't know, what's the proper way to do this?
Well, if you want to bring it as a future agenda item.
I mean, how, how would you recommend?
You're asking for council support right now for a future agenda item. You have one person, so you don't care about the other three of those?
Oh, no, oh, no, you just said I...
I said I'm a no.
Okay, okay.
I'm a no. I feel that the information should come to all of us. It's a short timeline with 60 days and 90 days, not like Vistra and Offshore Wind that are years of projects, so I wouldn't want somebody to have information that all of us don't, don't have, and I wouldn't want somebody to negotiate at this point with such a small window. But that's just me.
I wouldn't...
Well, this, this is relative to the future agenda item, right? Not debate.
So it's just whether, yes, we shouldn't be getting into the debate of it, but just whether you want to put it on as a future agenda item.
There you go.
Yeah, so I would support the future agenda item.
There you go. You got it, four people. So you want a future agenda item to address having a subcommittee for Morro Elementary?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. And also, I, future agenda item to expand the scope of the BESS ordinance that staff is currently working on to include all future energy projects within Morro Bay? Sorry, sorry. But it just, that because I've thought that now with the fact that we have the substation there, the PG&E substation there, we're probably always going to be thinking about these things, and it might be a good idea just to figure out where we want to cite, you know, industrial energy projects.
So, if I may, my recommendation would be, so we know we're currently under the two-year urgency ordinance, and this gives us two years to develop a permanent ordinance. I don't have a date for you right now, but like I announced, when the council extended the urgency ordinance for two years, we do plan to come to council with a framework and some options for the permanent ordinance, and I think that could be the appropriate time for the council to discuss expanding the scope of that permanent ordinance to include other types of energy-related projects.
Industrial, mm-hmm. Okay. Then that would be, like, relatively, that's not gonna be in two years?
No, yeah, that would be, it would be within the next six months.
Okay, all right, that sounds good, thank you. All right, thanks.
Yeah, I've, I've got one. The city in November of 2022 passed resolution number 103-22, which was a flagpole policy. So I'd like to bring a future agenda item to reconsider the flagpole policy, resolution 103-22.
I'll support that.
Same here.
Anything else? Anybody else?
Actually, one other thing, and I don't know if this should be a future agenda item or how to best do this, but maybe city manager or city attorney can help me with this. I wanted to add something to the legislative platform, and is this the right venue to do that, or? I, I thought it might be a good idea to add that Morro Bay supports commercial fishing to the legislative platform. It's on there? Okay, good. Okay, then we're good.
We're adjourned.